Can I invite up? Let me call us back to open session, please. And ask if Brooke Noble is here, please. Come lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Welcome.
Thank you for joining us, Brooke. Brooke, thank you for joining us tonight. We are honored that Brooke Noble is going to be, is here tonight as our stellar student for Sacramento City Unified. Brooke recently graduated from Health Professions High School and over the course of her four years there has demonstrated academic excellence, kindness, and maturity. She has overcome obstacles and defied the odds. In addition to being involved on campus through yearbook and internship, Brooke works 20 to 40 hours a week to provide support to her family. She helps her brother in his activities and her mother at home. Despite her numerous responsibilities and trials, she maintains a positive and refreshing attitude. Brooke's teacher said of her, "She is a true example of a stellar student, and I wish all kids had the internal strength to power through difficult situations and continue to strive for their goals the way that Brooks does." We hope to continue to watch Brooke grow and follow her dreams, and it is great honor that we recognize you, Brooke Noble, as our district stellar student. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'd like to say a couple words?
Yeah. Well, thank you to everyone at Health Professions High School, my high school, for helping me strive not only academically but also socially. Thank you to my family for supporting me, and thank you all for having me here. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much. All right. And now I'd like to recognize Natalie Rosas.
Hello. Oh, sorry.
Well, I guess, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and start first? My apologies.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone's having a nice evening. I'm very excited because today I will formally introduce our next student school board member for the 2017-2018 school year, Sarah Nguyen. So Sarah is an incoming senior at West Campus High School. She has served as the president of Student Advisory Council over the last year, and I've had the pleasure of knowing her the entirety of last school year, and she's an incredible person, and I know full-heartedly that she's going to do an incredible job as the next student school board member. And during the summer, I'm going to be continuing mentoring her to make sure that she's prepared when the time comes. So I'm going to give over the mic, scoot over the mic to her for a little.
Hi. I just wanted to say thank you all for giving me this wonderful opportunity, and I just want to express how excited I am for this new upcoming year, and just thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, we've got a couple things for you, of course, but I'll recognize any board members who might have something to say, and we'll start with Christina.
Thank you, President Hanson. It's always a hard night when our student board members are growing up and leaving us, and we feel like they're our babies, and we take them and we love them, and we watch them grow. And one thing I can say about Natalie is when she first came to us last year, she was meek and quiet, and she didn't want to hit her button. And it didn't take her but a couple meetings, and boy, she was hitting that button like, "I have something to say." And these students, the students really need my voice for them, so I can't tell you how much we appreciate as board members that you have been such a strong voice for your, for the student body of Sac City Unified, and you are going to be sorely missed. I'm going to miss your hugs when you come, and I hope that you'll come back and visit us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minnick.
Well, I just want to say how much I appreciate everything that Member Rosas has done over the course of this school year. I came in in December, and I have really appreciated being able to work with you and you helping guide me in my relationship with the Student Advisory Committee and really allowing the space for us to kind of figure out what a true adult-youth partnership can look like when we're developing policy for this district, and I really appreciate that. We've had a lot of meetings to go through the agendas before board meetings, and I'm always really impressed with your insight and honesty about the issues we're addressing, and I have really appreciated having you there. I, you know, and I'm sure that Sarah's going to do an amazing job, but I'm really going to be sad to have you go, and so I appreciate all the work that you've done, so thank you.
Member Ryan.
So Natalie, what I said to you earlier tonight is so true. If I could hold on to you for the next few years, I would. We've been very blessed to have some wonderful student board members, but without a doubt, you have been exemplary in every way. You have such a powerful voice, so this idea that you evolved from being meek, I mean, you always had incredible intelligence and very astute observations to bring out, and I frankly have been so proud to watch you come into yourself over the course of this last year. And I will say, because a lot of people don't know, I mean, you, in addition to all of the hundreds of hours you spent at the Student Advisory Council and on the board, were as active a board member as any of us in the superintendent search and hiring, and you were a powerful voice with some of the most insightful questions, and frankly, really the ability to cut to the crux of the issue in a way that quite often we as board members somehow miss. And so I want to thank you for being just a brilliant and wonderful addition to the board.
Member Cochran.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Natalie. Just to clarify a little bit about Natalie's groundbreaking role, prior to her work on the board, there had never been a student actively involved in the superintendent search. And what that means is she attended community meetings, but she also was involved in the closed-session debates on who we would choose as a superintendent, and she had a vote, and she used it well and wisely, and I'd like to thank her for that. I welcome Sarah, and I'm looking forward to meeting you, Natalie. Are you going to let us know where you're going to be going to school next year?
Next year, I will be moving to Modesto, so I will be going to Modesto Junior College and hopefully transferring over to UCLA. That's the goal.
Member Wu.
Thank you, President Hanson. I want to congratulate Natalie. I think one of the, she has matured so fast, and I think that, you know, we want our children to stay children forever so we can enjoy them. I mean, I wish my puppy dog stayed a puppy dog forever because they're so cute, but Natalie is not only cute, she's smart, and I, she is maturing at such a rapid rate that I, I don't fear. I know that by the time she finishes just her first two years of college, at the rate that she has been going, she'll be ready to become president of the United States after two years. And so, you know, she is, Natalie is so insightful. I kind of feel, Sarah, you had huge shoes to fill, so, you know, whatever mentoring Natalie can give you over the summer, try to absorb as much as you can, because that is how insightful she is. I wish you well in your future endeavors, and one of my greatest pleasures, and I have to thank President Hanson for this, is to be able to speak at your graduation, and, but my only disappointment was that you didn't hang around to take pictures with us. We were waiting for you, and you were gone.
Sorry.
Anyway, please keep us surprised of your endeavors, and don't hesitate to reach out to us from time to time, even for advice or to bounce ideas or thoughts off of us. We're here for you as well.
I will also put in my thanks to you very much for being here with us for this year and providing your intellect and your passion for the job and for representing students. You've done an excellent job at that. The students can be very proud that you spoke up for them and, you know, provided the insight that we need to have here when we're making decisions on behalf of the district. I'm excited you've got a place picked out for the next couple of years, and wish you luck getting to UCLA. I have no doubt you can do whatever you would like to do, and particularly proud that you are here representing, you know, from McClatchy High School, so you've done McClatchy proud as well, and another in a long line of young women that have been the student board member. I think that's the trend, you know, women are just taking over, so congratulations on keeping that trend going and passing it on to Sarah. So we've got some great representation from students, and you've really set the bar high. And we have, of course, the famous apple, you know, with your name on it here, so let me provide you that, and Christina has something for you as well, so.
Well, when you need a letter of recommendation, you can reach out to us. No, I'm just playing. You can for that, but on behalf of, on behalf of the board, we also pitched in for a little gift for you.
Thank you all so much. I'm so surprised. I didn't know this was part of the agenda. You know, I've had such a, such a truly growing experience being part of the board this year, and I've, I've always had, had the voice, but I've definitely found a push in myself to share it more. So thank you, thank you to all of you for being a part of that growth within me, because it's meant so much. Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much again. Mr. Barron, announcement of action taken in closed session.
None, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? Do I have a second? Yeah, I think I do that when we get to the consent item. That's okay. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Special presentation. Let me call up Consey and Tiffany, please, for our Teacher of the Year Award.
Thank you, Board President Hanson, Superintendent and members of the board. As we work collectively to support, nurture, and educate our students, we are happy and honored to be here to present these special recognitions to our valuable employees. You will hear first about our Teachers of the Year, and we have Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons and SCTA President Nikki Milewski to tell us more about that and share in the process and recognize the employees, and then we'll be hearing from some of our classified leadership and classified champions.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Bonda, and board members. I am Tiffany Smith Simmons. It is my pleasure that I have an opportunity to co-present with our Teachers Association Some say that teaching is not simply a profession, but it's a calling. Teachers see what everyone else fails to see. They believe what nobody ever did, and they tell us not to settle. Teachers change lives. In a world which is constantly forcing you to become everything that you are not and where you are surrounded by imposters, teachers help you march to the beat of your own drum, and that's how they change lives. It is my privilege tonight to honor our Teachers of the Year. We are fortunate to have many, many wonderful and amazing educators who continue to raise the bar of what it means to be a great teacher. We are honored to have a dedicated Teacher of the Year selection committee, which includes two of our own former Teacher of the Years, Jennifer Ellerman and Stephanie Smith, and a number of representatives from various stakeholders. Based on what we saw, we selected two teachers to represent the district in the Sacramento County Teacher of the Year program. Those teachers are Elizabeth Erickson, who teaches at Sutter Middle School, and Rebecca Seeger, who teaches at Rosemont High School. Elizabeth has over 18 years of teaching experience, and Rebecca has served our district as a classroom teacher for 20 years. Rebecca and Elizabeth, will you join us? Every year, we have an opportunity to select teachers who we feel make a positive impact in the lives of students we serve. Although we have many people who do this on a daily basis, we are pleased to recognize these two teachers as Teacher of the Year for the Sacramento City Unified School District for the 2017-2018 school year. Important to note, like in years previous, our teachers will represent Sac City in the county-level competition, and the annual awards banquet is set for August 25th, 2017. Please join me in congratulating Rebecca and Elizabeth. We are proud of you and thankful for the wonderful contributions you make to Sacramento City Unified School District. We are better because of you.
Member Pritchett, you have a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, I would just like to congratulate both of our Teachers of the Year. This is such a great honor that we have, and I, in particular, just want to congratulate both of you, but Rebecca Seeger, I know you personally. She's been a teacher at Rosemont High School for many years now, 12? Oh, wait, that's a lot. As you know, I've had two kids that have gone through Rosemont that have grown close to you, and as, you know, of your many accomplishments, and I'm not there every day, I don't see what you do every day, but I know that you have such a great part of grading senior projects, planning the senior awards night, probably helping out a lot with the graduation ceremonies, and on top of your normal job, an English teacher. So I just wanted to congratulate you and tell you how much I appreciate you can't leave Rosemont. You've got to stay. Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Member Vang.
But thank you for your service. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much. All right, Consey, thank you for just staying right there, and then we bring down the classified champions.
Yes, and for this, I'd like to invite up HR Directors Christina Villegas, Roxanne Finley, and some of our union leadership, Carla Fawcett, SCIU President, and Mike Vice President, and I believe we have others. I saw Richard Kahn here from Teamsters. Great, coming, coming up. Again, this is, as you know, to support and educate our students. It is absolutely a collaborative collective effort, so we are very pleased to announce and share with you our classified champions for this year.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Bonda, and board members. My name is Christina Villegas, and tonight we will be honoring 17 of our classified employees who have gone above and beyond their duties and who deserve the recognition for their dedication to the district, as well as their commitment in helping promote the continuous educational services to our students. These employees were nominated by their peers, parents, students, and administrators based on their beyond-the-call-of-duty service and commitment to our students. The district is excited and honored to present this award to our classified champions. Our first champion, if they wouldn't come up to receive their award, is Elizabeth Liz Adobadi. She, she is current, she is currently a clerk to at Golden Empire Elementary School, and she has been with the district for over 24 years. Our next champion is Tia Andrade. She is a food services assistant floor worker at Leonardo da Vinci K-8 School. She has been with the district for over 12 years. Our third champion is Jun Fun Fanny Chung, who is our controller bookkeeper high school at Luther Burbank High School. She has been with the district for over 25 years. Our next champion is Cristiano Farinias, currently works as a customer service specialist, employee compensation, has been with the district for over three years. Our fourth or fifth champion is Mario Gallegos, fiscal services technician, employee compensation, has been with the district for over two years. Our next champion is Roosevelt Knox, food service assistant, has been with the district for over 24 years from Luther Burbank High School. Our, our next champion is Valerie Levine. She's our customer service specialist in human resources, has been with the district for over 23 years. Our next champion is Brandon Lillard, human resource analyst, has been with the district for over five years. Our next champion is Monica Lopez, customer service specialist for human resources, has been with the district for over a year. Our next champion is Julian Luna, IEP-designated instructional para at John Sloan Elementary School for over four years. Our next champion is Mirna Madrigal, custodian for child development, has been with the district for over two years. Our next champion is Iyana Pease, coordinator for integrated community services, has been with the district for over two years. Our next champion is Marna Salasar, yard duty, Washington Elementary, has been with the district for over 13 years. Our next champion is Cecilia Scott, office technician at Sam Brennan Middle School, has been with the district for over 11 years. Next champion is Nancy Stagg, school office manager, Sutterville Elementary School, has been with the district for over 18 years. And our last champion is David Wong, instructional aide, special ed, Luther Burbank, for over 13 years with the district. Congratulations, classified champion. Congratulations to our champions.
Yeah. Well, let me just say what a, what an honor it is, and please keep taking pictures. You don't need to look at me. Look at the, look at your fans. Where are your other fans behind you? We got your back here. But it's remarkable when you hear the, you hear the number of years of service that some of you have and the dedication to the district and our students is really extraordinary, because the more time that you put into the, the district, you know, the better you are and the more you can serve our students. So for those of you who put in so many years, thank you, thank you so much. For those of you who are just getting started and you're already being recognized, that's great. We'll look forward to keeping the accolades coming your way for the good work that you're doing. It's absolutely important and vital to our students' success. Everybody who's working at our schools, you know, you're part of what makes it successful for those students. So everybody's job's important. So thank you very much again on behalf of our board and our school district.
So we can get everybody in one picture?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Board members, feel free to join us if you'd like.
That's good, Charlie.
He's so good.
Pull them up.
All right. All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. All right. Let me, let me take one more point of special privilege here. I have been informed that Mr. Knox, who's here in the audience joining us, is 94 years old? Is that what it, 95? My goodness, what an inspiration, Mr. Knox, thank you very much. I'm pointing to you right now, saying thank you for serving and continue to work for us for so many years. There's hope, there's hope for us. He looks really good. He does look good.
Hi, how are you?
Give it a couple more, give another. Good, we're ahead of schedule, we're 10 minutes ahead of schedule. Great, we'll move to 8.0 public comment, Mr. Barrios, please read the first four names.
We have five public comments. If you could please line up in single file behind the podium, so we can go through public comment quickly. Please come up when you hear your name. First speaker is Nikki Malewski, followed by Frank DeYoung, Karen Swet, Ryan Carroll, and Angel Gammon.
Come on down.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Nikki Malewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. It is certainly hard to believe that today is the last day of classes with students. It's been a very busy and exciting year, and like all of you, we were much looking forward to working with the new superintendent, who begins with the district in July 1st. It is very fortunate that Mr. Aguilar begins his tenure with our district being in the best financial position in its history, a position further enhanced once again with the final budget deal worked out by the governor and the state legislature. The financial strength of Sac City gives us a great opportunity to make our district the destination district for California. But to do that, the leadership of the district is going to have to make spending on today's students a top priority. The number of vacancies in this district continues to grow, nearly doubling in the last three years. As we sit here today, there are over 100 vacancies among certificated positions, with the district also relying on expensive outside agencies to fill dozens of positions among speech and language pathologists, psychologists, school nurses. Our proposals to improve special education, including significant revision of Appendix D, adding arts and music, reduced class sizes, increasing support staff like psychologists and nurses, and even addressing the issue of pre-funding retiree health benefits, have all been rejected by the district. Despite our best efforts to negotiate a collective bargaining agreement, the process has been hindered by the district's ill-prepared and unmotivated bargaining team leaders. We expect the next school year to begin with the parties moving immediately to fact-finding, with the potential of a major labor dispute in the first, our district in a generation. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to put Sac City on the pathway to becoming the destination district of California. The only thing that's missing is district leadership to lead us there. I look forward to working with you next year, thank you.
Next speaker is Frank DeYoung.
Good evening, President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, and Board Members. I'm Frank DeYoung with Hollywood Park Elementary School, and I promise to be kinder and gentler tonight. I'm basically here tonight because this is the last official board meeting. I know we have one at the end of the month to do the budget, and I wanted to take this opportunity to give a personal thank you to Superintendent Jose Banda for all his work. I greatly appreciate what he's done for this district. If you realize where we were as a district over three years ago, and you look at where we are now, it's not perfect, but we're in a place now where we can start building and doing the things we're always talking about. We, as a board, have to start not asking why, but asking why not? We need to start moving forward, and I think he has put us in a place to do that, and I can't thank him enough for that. He was accessible, you know, he wasn't one of these people that just said, "I had an open-door policy," and didn't mean it. If you called and said, "Can I have some time?" He gave you time. And that says a lot about who he is, a lot of people don't. They say it, but, "Oh, I'm just not available, I'm sorry, I'm really busy." But that's not how he was, and I just wanted to acknowledge his work and thank him for all that he's done. Thank you, sir.
Karen Swet, followed by Ryan Carroll.
Hello, Karen Swet, Making Sense Work. The org chart is not up to date, again. And we, many of us, consider this a transparency issue, kind of borders-on-transparency, when you can't kind of go look at the org chart and figure out who's in what position where and who to talk to when you want to rag on somebody. On the district website, it does say that it will be updated every quarter. I would like to remind you that teachers in high schools keep track of over, up to 150 kids every day accurately. If we can't have, if you can't, if they can't keep the org chart up to date, at least on a weekly basis, maybe we should bring in some high school teachers. Transparency issue, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Carroll, and I'm the Expanded Learning Program Manager at Nicholas Elementary, which is just around the corner. First off, I would like to thank the Budget Committee for having the recommendation to backfill the $3.25 million to fund expanded learning for at least one more school year. It does mean a lot, especially coming from my side and speaking for a few others who are one of the bigger programs in the district. What that allows me to do as an after-school program provider is to allow the other 85 students who would not have slots in programming for after-school, so I would bring my total back up to 170 students, and then plus the additional 45 students that rely on the before-school program, as well as their families. Again, and it also helps to make sure that we do have funding for the summer session, which provides programming for another 100 students that would otherwise not have the access to programming to prevent the summer slide. So I do want to thank you and, you know, highly recommend that that does get passed for at least the one year. And kind of relaying on to summer programming, I know this year's theme, we're relying on superheroes. I know students, especially elementary students, look up superheroes, which may be fictional, they read about Superman and Batman, and now Wonder Woman, and all the other superheroes that are out there. You guys have the opportunity to be those, wow, I didn't know I was going to do this, to be those real-life superheroes for those kids and those families, and for the staff that works with them. So I know with every superhero, they have their origin stories. You know, Spider-Man got bit, Bruce Wayne was adopted, Superman came from whatever planet that was, I'm sorry, not up to date. But let this be the board and the district's origin story of how they stood up to fund after-school programming, and realize it's not just a room in the back of the school, that it is a continuous program that runs with the school, and they work synergetically to build up the students for tomorrow. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Angel Gama, followed by Darlene Anderson and David Constancio.
Hi, President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, and Board Members. My name's Angel Garcia, I am a parent in the district, and I'm also the Secretary of the Community Advisory Committee. I just wanted to update the board on an invitation that the Community Advisory Committee received for developing a board policy for suicide prevention for the district. We have some work to do, but I'm very happy and I'm very proud that our district was very inclusive. Intentionally for this committee, there was a variety of stakeholders at the committee meeting that I attended on the 14th, including counseling centers like Gender Health Center, the Gay and Lesbian Center, River Oak. There was a parent and a student there, there was a variety of district staff. And the things that we talked about were really awesome. It really showed an intention to not only develop a policy and say, hey, these are the rules, these are, this is our strategy, but some specifics, such as resources for parents, how we were going to do that. And we also talked about data and outcomes, and how to measure if the policy is working. So I just wanted to update the board, the next meeting's going to be on the 21st, from 1:00 to 3:30, and so I'll be providing updates. But the work that this committee is doing is really impactful. And the best part of what we talked about is, this policy is with the understanding that the district really wants to focus on prevention, rather than reactionary, you know, reactions to crises. So more to come, but I just wanted the board to know that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Darlene Anderson. I think I wanted to come tonight just because the lack of the engagement of the African-American community in public services, and especially in public school system. I think we've been, the Emancipation Proclamation, whatever, 150 years, outside of that Brown versus Board of Education, 50 years, but Black people still don't, they're still not engaged. It's like they don't know their responsibility to oversee public services. And the outreach for the district is just none, because the few organizations that you do have engaged are attempting to have conversations, just like I've been coming here for 20 years. And we know the condition of most children in this district who are African-American. My children were fine, I know how to fight, I understand that the public service is a service, and my children should have benefited. But what about these kids who are not benefiting? Their parents come, and most of the time, they're outraged, and most of the time, law enforcement helps to get rid of them. And so, you know, the whole thing about engaging in the process, the district has failed miserably. The outreach is not enough for people who have been enslaved in America, because they don't know what their personal responsibility is to oversee public policy. And it really is an individual responsibility. We have a lot of people in the military who retired here, African-Americans, but guess what? They don't do public policy, they don't get engaged, because that was not part of their service requirement. It was mandatory that they did not get engaged. So we have a lot of educated Blacks here who are not overseeing public interests. And the failure of African-American students in this district is unacceptable. I don't know how you get to 12th grade with 25 credits, and the board did nothing. And the site did nothing, and the parent attended, but the parent was incapable of doing anything. So what does that student look like on the street? We can't say that we're tired of sex trafficking, and we're tired of kids killing each other, taking each other's property, because there's a whole group that we turn a blind eye to. This district has to do more. And I know that Mr. Banda has attempted to reach out to the African-American community, but for what Black people don't understand, he can't be responsible for. We have to be responsible for ourselves, and that's how come I'm here, and I come, and I will come as long as I'm here, to encourage people to understand that they have a personal responsibility to ensure that the public dollars allocated for their people are benefiting. And it's just not enough to partner with one or two agencies, because even the NWCPC did a major report about the condition of education in Sacramento, and they had nothing about the LCFS process, or nothing about the LCFS. And so how can that major organization not know anything?
Can you please wrap up, thank you very much?
I will, thank you so much for allowing me to come and vent, so to speak.
Always, Darlene, thank you very much, appreciate it.
David Constancio, followed by Angie Sutherland and Diana Rodriguez.
Good evening, I was here a couple of weeks ago, encouraging that we find a way to fully fund the expanded learning programs. And I'm very grateful that the Budget Committee was able to work diligently and identify those funds. Again, the program manager at William Land, we currently have 275 students in the after-school program. Next year was looking about to be 83 students only in that program. Families are waiting by patiently, I haven't started enrolling kids yet, so hopefully, again, that we encourage you guys to pass that, so that way we can continue to grow and continue to provide the safe place after-school and the enriching place after-school for these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angie Sutherland.
Good evening, everyone, Angie Sutherland, I'm speaking as a parent. I will be speaking later on different items. The handout that you're getting now summarizes my individual comments on those, but I'm not going to bring them up now. I did want to talk about some information, just some data and information that I gathered about students and the suspension rates. I know you guys are going to be approving all the plans, and all students in our district, the rating is high for suspension, and that's for all students. For students with disabilities, the rating on the California dashboard is very high, and it's even increased by 2%. For African-American students, the rate is also very high, and it's increased by 4.3%. So, and also, students with disabilities are two to three times more likely to be bullied than their non-disabled peers. We all know the graduation rate for students with disabilities has dipped at the same time that it's increased for all students, for overall for students. We are all aware that Appendix D of the teacher's contract has a legal language that promotes a climate and culture that excludes students with disabilities. We know there's been initiatives that have been halted for inclusion and restorative practices, social and emotional learning. We know from the audit report, all that that came out of that, with one of the things being that there needs to be more shared accountability between the school sites and the district, and that information should not be filtered at school sites to protect schools. It needs to be fully embraced and implemented. It needs to be fully embraced and implemented, plans and initiatives at school sites. So those are just some, some information that I wanted you to consider. And then I have a little example on the back of how issues can impact a student. And the student is my daughter. So I wanted to give you a little update. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diana Rodriguez.
Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez, back to our August Chambers.
Thank you, President Hanson, Vice President Jesse Ryan, and who's our other vice president now?
Mr. Wu.
Oh, again. Mr. Daryl Wu.
Another round.
Vice President again. I'm here tonight to express our extreme gratitude for Ms. Mai Vang on the Finance Committee and her diligent work in ensuring funding for after-school programming in the amount of $3.5, $3.25 million. I can't tell you how great of a value this is for children district-wide. I know I was in your seats. But just to tell you a little bit about Target Excellence, which I now sit on their board and I'm their treasurer, you know, Target Excellence has been partnering with Sac City Unified for over 20 years. And we have demonstrated an extraordinary amount of value-added programs. And we also have learned just recently that we had a lot of our employees come over back into the district, which includes, increases your diversity within your employee base. And also, it shows that we have an extraordinary amount of return on our investment for the dollars that you give to us. And the other thing that we do is we help to increase your ADA, which you all know brings more money to the district. So I hope that you take all of these in consideration as you ponder over the next items in your agenda. And I gratefully thank the entire board for supporting after-school programs. I again want to thank Ms. Mai Vang for, and Daryl Wu too, for all of your work and listening to us and having these conversations at depth with us. Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us. Appreciate it. Good to see you again. Mr. Wu.
Thank you, former member Rodriguez, for coming forward. And I, and I just want to share that, that program on which you now sit on the board is in fact going to be a model moving forward for after-school programming because vis-à-vis the requirements of the LCAP. And Mr. Heron's taught us that after-school programming can, in fact, you can devise metrics to see where the, where improvements are with the children. And as we move forward, because we have such limited money, it's going to be my recommendation to this board that if we get no further state funding for after-school programming, that at least the LCAP committee look at to see if that as a policy, we want to continue to fund that. If the LCAP committee funds it and the monies are coming from LCFF, then as part of that funding, the programming will have to show, number one, what improvements they expect to make and to measure those improvements in our students. And so I thank Mr. Heron for devising that program. And this is a notice to all other after-school programs that they will, same, similar requirement will be of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ryan.
Thank you. I will be brief. I know that we have a long agenda before us. One, you know, I want to recognize the leadership of our board in rolling up their sleeves and getting to work to find the resources necessary to continue our extended learning programs. The reality is that they are not value-added. They are core to supporting academic success for students who are often students that are most vulnerable in our district. And so this is an essential investment that we're making and a great example of the district saying with finite resources, we have to step up and fund what we know best serves our students. In addition to that, I really want to recognize the comments of Angie Sutherland, of Angel, of Darlene and others around the inadequacies of the board, the district and the system in meeting the needs of students with disabilities and our African-American population. I was as troubled as anyone when the graduation data came out and showed that while the state was experiencing record highs, we were trending down. When you couple that with the doubling of the statistics around graduation rates and suspension rates for students with disabilities and African-American students, I think that we have a mandate to take action. And I believe that with our new leadership and our new superintendent coming in with equity and access as the guiding principle in everything we do, we need to be held accountable to really move the needle on student success. So thank you for continuing to bring that to our attention and for asking us to do better because we can and we should.
Thank you very much. We have some folks that are here in the audience to watch the passage of the consent agenda. So I'd like to ask my fellow board members if we could just take the consent agenda first before we go into the public hearings and that'll save our guests from having to sit and join us for another hour and a half. We love having the audience here, but I think that we can allow you to get on about your life. So if that's okay, we'll just do the consent agenda. There are two items that are going to be pulled that are not germane to the item that they're here for, but we'd like to, I'd like to have a motion regarding the consent agenda to remove item 10.1A, item SA 18-056, the Fuel Education Contract, and also remove item 10.1L regarding the La Familia Counseling Center. And then to add a new item, 10.1L entitled Approved Staff Recommendation Regarding Expulsion Number 21.
So move.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Very good. So with those in place, I'd like a motion to move the consent agenda.
So move.
The agenda is moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. And to our friends from McClatchy High School, congratulations. We've moved that. And thank you for all the folks in facilities who've done hard work moving all that forward. So thanks for joining us. All right, now we will go back to our public hearing, item 9.0. Let me call up Elliot and Kathy for the LCAP.
Good evening, Vice President Ryan, Superintendent Banda, board members. My name is Elliot Lopez. I'm the Chief Information Officer and tonight I'm joined by Kathy Morrison, our LCAP SIPSA Coordinator. And tonight with us is Frank DeYoung, a member of our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. Tonight, we're here to conduct a public hearing for the 2017 to 2010 LCAP. We will discuss the revisions to the document since it was released on June 1st and provide an update on the process leading to finalization and adoption of the LCAP on June 28th. Ed Code requires the LCAP to be shared at two public meetings and one is to be a public hearing along with the district budget. Per California Ed Code, the budget and the LCAP are to be adopted at the same public meeting annually and that has to take place before July the 1st. Our timeline here shows that we've moved, shows how we've moved through the steps in our process to develop and finalize the LCAP. This year, as you know, we added a second draft of the LCAP for additional input. And tonight, we're here for our public hearing, a chance for the community to weigh in on the plan prior to adoption. Also depicted in our timeline here in red are key state budget milestones upon which the LCAP development process are dependent.
Good evening, Vice President Ryan, board members and Superintendent Banda. I'm Kathy Morrison, the district's LCAP Coordinator. Since the release of the second draft of the LCAP, we have reviewed and responded to the comments from the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. We've analyzed the data from the LCAP survey and consulted with the Sacramento County of, Sacramento County Office of Education and received technical assistance on the document. We've met with Cabinet to review and prioritize actions and services and worked with the Budget Services Department to ensure alignment with the developing budget. Using one-time funds from the state, we are able to fund expanded learning and fill the gap caused by loss of grant monies this year. We heard from the community that they wanted greater access to district decision-making through the availability of district information and resources in their primary language. This year, we are translating all LCAP and Single Plan for Student Achievement, SIPSA collaterals, including draft versions. We codified our district commitment to ethnic studies by incorporating key implementation milestones into the metrics. These are just a select number of things where we had impact from the community. Last night, we held the final LCAP Parent Advisory Committee meeting for this year. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Frank DeYoung, who's a member of this committee, third year in a row.
Tuesday night, we did have the last meeting. We had a challenging process this year, but we did get it done. We, we did finish what we were tasked to do. I'm not going to say it was perfect, but we had two meetings to roll up our comments and get everything together. It was done by the committee. I will say it wasn't driven by district. They coordinated, but really the committee ran the meetings and we did what we were supposed to do. And the last meeting we had on Tuesday night was to go over what we thought was working, what wasn't working, what we could do better next year and some things to look at for next year. And, and with that, you know, we talked about the development process and we wanted to identify opportunities for improvement. And I'd like to say, I think the committee as a whole was always grateful for the opportunity to contribute to this important work. I know I am. And I hope to continue to do so. We thank you for the opportunity to be involved and we'll keep driving. And I'm looking forward to working with board members in the future to possibly get the process ironed out some more. And I'm really looking forward to that challenge. So thank you.
Back to the timeline. Tonight, we will note comments and input received as we hear from the board and community on the current version of the plan. We will make final adjustments between this public hearing and June 28th, at which point the board will be presented with the final version for adoption. And this concludes our presentation. We welcome your comments at this time.
Thank you. Frank, can I ask you to come back up for a moment and I'll see if, oh, do we have any public comments? Sorry, Alex.
Yeah, we have eight public comments. If you don't want to take those now.
Go ahead. We'll take that first.
If you could line up, please, as you hear your name. Karen Sweat, followed by Teresa Flores, LaShawna Janine Brazil, Carl Pinkston, Darlene Anderson, Alex Visaya, Liz Guillen and Angie Sutherland.
Karen Sweat, Making Sense Work. The LCAP and the budget are supposed to match. Unfortunately, the LCAP does not match the budget. The budget uses consistent, standard language and format. It never changes. Fiscal data can be tracked within a year from year to year and compared to other districts and counties. The LCAP presents revenue information that is inconsistent with the prescribed standard. This makes it impossible to decipher total revenue amounts and separate revenue amounts for LCFF base, sup and cons, Title I, Education Protection Funds, one-time funds and various other grants. It would be ever so much more transparent and efficient if the revenue was described in language, revenue object code and resource codes that is consistent with the budget. Consistency is basically a transparency issue. I would like the board to consider taking a deep look at the possibility of how you, as decision-makers and the public, would benefit from this consistency. It is not difficult. The budget pages, which you're going to get to next, are pages 19 to 21, three pages. There's the list of revenue by name, by object code, some resource codes. My question is which lines are in the LCAP?
My name is Teresa Flores. I'm an organizer with Sacramento ACT, Area Congregations Together. And I want to thank the LCAP Advisory Committee for the work that they've put into as well as district staff. One of the comments that I did have was more in general just around transparency. We do have some of our members who have participated in the LCAP, including previous years and this year's. And it seems to be that the same issues continue to happen with, you know, for example, numbers not being attached, amounts not being attached to the LCAP drafts until the, the third iteration of it. So again, this just raises questions around transparency and around how, you know, the folks in the LCAP committee can be making decisions around it without having clarity around the amounts given. Including this presentation, for example, it would be really helpful to have in the presentation headlines around the LCAP versus just a more of a general presentation as long we've had. Again, you know, I appreciate the work that has been put into it and I would invite and urge the district and you as a board to help ensure greater transparency moving forward. And, and we've also heard about, you know, the, the issues I've heard directly from EL parents in terms of, of having access to adequate and, and on-time information so that they can give input and give comments and have ample time to do that. So again, just urging the, the district and you all to help ensure greater transparency, greater access moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda and President Hanson. Happy upcoming Father's Day and happy belated Mother's Day to y'all. My name is LaShawna Brazil and I'm with the Black Parallel School Board. And this evening, I would like to speak on the Local Control, Local Control Accountability Plan. On January 1st, 2014, the California Assessment Student Performance in Progress CAP system was established. The Smarter Balance Assessment System utilizes a computer adaptive and performance test that show what students know, know and what they're capable of doing. However, based on the 2015-16 assessments, only 23% of African-American scholars met or exceeded English Language Arts compared to 61% of white scholars. However, the district failed to include in the LCAP the purchases of 602 Chromebooks for the lowest performing schools in the district. One of the challenges or fundamental barriers to scholars in grades one to three is the ability to use adaptive computers. In other words, they cannot answer questions until they are able to overcome the challenges of the use of computers. I will conclude by stressing that we need to fund Chromebooks for our students in the LCAP to move our district into a 21st century multicultural educational system. Again, thank you, LaShawna Brazil with the Black Parallel School Board.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda, and I guess now you're the Chair.
For the moment.
For the moment. First of all, I want to acknowledge Ellen Cochran for the honor to be able to serve on the Parent Advisory Committee. It has been a real honor and a pleasure representing both her trustee area as well as the Black Parallel School Board. However, I am actually, this is resigning. I served my two years of duty and this is it. And it's based on a couple of pieces, parts. One, having to do with the process itself and that the process starts late and does not start early to appoint parents and community to be on the Parent Advisory Committee, which fails to allow parents and community to have input in the process at the fall time of the year. So that was what was really critical and a major, what I think, a fundamental flaw in the whole process of the LCAP. The second piece having to do with Darlene Anderson comes up here every single time talking about African-American students, and I do not see anything in the LCAP that relates specifically addressing the performance or suspension rates for African-American students. If they are the second lowest performing, there ought to be something that relates specifically to addressing. You cannot use a universal approach to something that is very specifically targeted. And I use the example of the suspension data, which only shows in the LCAP high school suspension rates, but does not disaggregate by ethnicity and race. So I'm not, in terms of just for African-Americans, there's also the question of suspension for Hmong and men as well, that oftentimes get overlooked. But you need to have that brought out and then have specific intervention or specific program, new programs, not existing programs, new programs that relates to supplemental concentration that addresses that continuing and ongoing problem. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene Anderson. It's a little concerning that, you know, black people are so marginalized in this district and that even though we hire African-Americans or people who are black, or maybe they're not exactly the same black as I am, former slave, maybe they're from Africa or Jamaica or whatever, different kind of blackness going on. But it doesn't address, it doesn't change anything. And I'm just concerned. I don't even know what to say anymore because it's concerning to me that our city is looking at the homeless population, our city is looking at the prostitution rates, sex trafficking, our city is looking at the killing, you know, African-Americans killing each other. But you have to realize, 12 years of this district and you get out and you can't even feed yourself, you know? But teachers want raises and teachers want to be recognized and some teachers are really good. But unfortunately, some teachers only focus on willful defiance issues and tolerance. And, you know, that came from the plantation. People used to get beat on the plantation when they didn't behave right, correctly. And, you know, people like me used to be hung and it's not a funny thing, but, you know, my mother always used to warn me, I need to watch what I say in public because something could happen to me. And that's very true. And back in the day, people did wind up disappearing. And I would say that if the board is just stubborn and just doesn't want to have the conversation about the failure and still wants to keep these kids, you still want to educate these kids because they draw a lot of money. Their money is for poverty, their money is for foster youth, their money is for special ed, and those are, you know, more dollars to the district. But the money is going to the programs like Leonardo da Vinci and Camilla Basic because those schools are funded and we do have teachers who are GATE-certified working there and they're working with the cream of the crop. And even if there's one African-American student that may be poverty there, it doesn't equate to the number of kids who are not getting any services. And I think that we need to talk about what's best for the district and best for all kids. And that has to be a public conversation and it hasn't happened. And for 20 years, I've been coming here saying the district needs to have that conversation. And unfortunately, it just hasn't happened. And maybe the new superintendent will be bold enough to do it, but Sacramento really doesn't concern itself around the failure of African-American peoples. And so, parents really need to just show up. And it took 150 or 200 people to build Rosemont High School and Sweeney said that he had no other choice but to build that high school. Well, we closed 15 schools in the South area.
Could you please wrap it up?
Yeah, we're building a new school in the area over there where Cal Expo is. And at the hardship and devastation of those other kids who are being transported and now responsible to get to schools, you know, on their own. And it's just, it's unfortunate, but when you don't talk about how the dollars are being used, nothing changes.
Thank you. Alex Visaya, followed by Liz Guillen and Angie Sutherland.
Let me digress. If your name is Alex, please stand up. The reason why I ask is our Public Information Officer today told me that this is the National Alex Day and my name is Alex. Thank you. Good evening. It's always an honor and a privilege to speak before this board. Thanks for having me. Distinguished Board of Trustees, Cabinet, and Staff. President Jay Hanson, Superintendent Senior Banda, my name is Alex Visaya. Advocate for our students and families of this district. If not me, then who? So let me be the voice of reason and the paragon of virtue. Let me speak sincerely and with passion to this body and everyone else who cares. As Judge Judy would say, "Look at me." However, it's best if I had one more word. Please look at me. Please hear me and please listen with your heart. Words do matter. Those are non, words do matter. I also recognize that being in the minority, I'm speaking for the silent majority. These are the non-English-speaking parents, hardly involved or engaged parents on the school site and board meetings. This journey started with me 30-plus years ago with this district and I've learned a lot and enough patience to speak my piece when the need arise. We don't need more programs. We just need right-size student outcomes and teaching classroom resources that we must deliver at every school site. That we already have when we have our legislative passed the 2013 Local Funding Formula, the local accountability plan, their use, there was a mandate by the legislator to reduce the class size to K3. So instead of waiting for 2023 to start the K3 class size reduction, we had the foresight to start 2014, 2015 school year. That's three years ago and there were eight priorities established under LCFF. So can we at least show our, to our community, just four results? Attendance, studies, chronic absenteeism, English Language Arts, Dedicated Parent Resource Center, reclassification of ELL students, and again, these are elementary and K8 schools only. Let us also revisit and take a closer look into reinstating budget services to all affected CSR school students that will make a great impact to concerned parents in school site as well. Less traffic congestion, especially on rainy days. Twice monthly, I had this concern problem as a panel Sarb board member, but I hear them complaining about this matter. Just an observation, the action is always at the school site and only in the classroom. To make it happen, we need a very strong and a steady leadership team to support the need of students and site staff. Let us not make the revolving door for the leadership. Finally, a month ago, I was asked if I'm ready to retire. My response today and to all of you, not yet, as long as I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Angie Sutherland and I am the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. And I'll be speaking tonight on the comments on the LCAP from the CAC membership. We did see a lot of carryover funding in the LCAP summary document. And so that was a little bit concerning considering the needs in our district that we're not expanding our funding in certain areas. So I know this is regarding the LCAP approval, but, and that's the district-wide document, but we wanted to reference that the single plans for student achievement, those are the things that are planned at the school sites. And so, those need to include plans for students with disabilities. And we urge site principals to recognize their responsibility to engage parents and teachers of students with disabilities in these plans so that they can appropriately plan for this population in terms of learning, achievement, climate, and parent engagement. One of the major issues in our district is the bullying of students with disabilities and we recommend increased funding for climate efforts and bullying prevention efforts. We do not see increases in this area and this is alarming. Also, transition planning for students with disabilities needs to be a comprehensive process about preparing for college, life, and career. We urge the board to increase support to ESL families and those who have students with disabilities to help them navigate special education. The CAC urges the board to take a look at the Sarb process, to consider the whole child since the family is often faced with multiple barriers. And also, we recognize Stacy Bell and Victoria Flores for their work on initiatives to ensure that kids stay in school and we urge the board to add in funding for these types of initiatives to include the empowerment of students with disabilities. So, it's our hope that you're dissecting this LCAP document and that you are contacting the LCAP staff and the Cabinet to change the document and provide the support that we need in our district. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. First, I want to commend Kathy Morrison. She kills herself for this. She works really, really hard and I think she does the best that she can do. But it's not her fault that the data is so bad. So, I mean, if you look at the Areas of Greatest Progress, what was written, it's just really hard, I mean, really reaching for some areas of progress. I recommend that, because this LCAP represents the first of the next three years, the three-year plan, that the district really focus on a reset. And as Member Wu talked about, looking at every plan and expenditure to look at, to really analyze whether or not the needs that have been identified, and there are some really great needs, whether or not the actions and services that have been planned and executed over the last few years, which in many ways were just increases of things that have been done for years and years before, whether or not that's really effective. If you look at the Greatest Needs section on page three, one of the things that really leaps out to me is the language about the number of student groups that fall into the red and orange categories. And those are the categories that are, that the state has said in its new accountability system really require action. But you know what? That information is just for the district overall. And the California Schools Dashboard provides even deeper information. Of course, the district probably has its own local information that is more up-to-date, but even if it doesn't, it can use the five-by-five grids that underlie the overall district information and shows the performance indicators by school and by student group within school. It will allow you to say, "We have this problem in certain areas," and it will allow you to be more focused in a way that you're hearing and have been hearing from parents, both in the LCAP and in the community for years. I just want to read one quote from a recent decision by the Department of Education in a case unrelated to Sacramento City Unified. "When properly explained in the LCAP, it will be apparent how the ELEA is acting to increase or improve services for unduplicated pupils and why it has determined that services identified will be effective to achieve its goal for unduplicated pupils." And in the instructions on the LCAP, it very clearly states, in the section where you demonstrate increased or improved services for unduplicated pupils, describe how the services provided are increased or improved as compared to services provided for all students. In other words, what is different? I think it's a real opportunity for you to look at that. You know that I will be there with you, working to try to pull that apart. You are so lucky that you have the educated and informed parents in this community that come to you and let you know how things are going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Cochran.
Thank you, President Hanson. So I have a couple of simple questions and then a comment, and this is for Chief Information Officer first. Chromebooks, seems like a not extremely expensive, easy fix. What's going on with Chromebooks? How can we get them where they need to go?
Well, in a recent update on the status of technology in the district, we conveyed to the board that we have actually significantly increased the number of Chromebooks. In this year alone, we purchased approximately 8,000 and have distributed them across the district with several of our schools already at a one-to-one status with Chromebooks. It is a platform that is extremely popular in the district and we are seeing those devices become more, purchase more in the districts and in the schools and become more available to our students. So we expect that number to continue to grow.
So, Ms. Brazil, if you're still here, is Chandra here? Yeah, sometimes, yes. Sometimes when a school doesn't have something they need and there is progress being made on acquisition, we just need to get it together a little bit better. Would it be possible for you to send me a list of the schools and the needs? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Eli. So... So, thank you, Carl, for your kind words about being chosen for LCAP. I'm sorry that you won't be continuing, but I understand it is a very large commitment, plus rotation of people in and out is good. If you would be kind enough to send me a couple of names of people who you think might be a good replacement, I'd appreciate that. And I also would very much appreciate, I took notes when you were speaking, but if you could bullet point your ideas for improvement, I can pass them on to the incoming superintendent. Okay, fantastic. So, I attended in this district, and I watched us lose our comprehensive high school to a board, you know, about 20 years ago, because I think, and I was told this by a community member, and I share this sentiment, that at that time, this district didn't feel or didn't want to undertake the education of young African-Americans. And so, we lost Sac Hi. I don't want anything like that to happen again. I live in my silo, my, you know, my basically white world, but I'm trying to break out of it a bit, and I'm trying to become more educated and support what's going on in this district with the wonderful people and students who need to succeed and can succeed. I am happy to tell the community that the first action of the new superintendent, when he comes on board July 1st, is to attend the Black Parallel School Board meeting. I don't know if you knew that or not, but he's coming. I would encourage anybody who needs to be educated more, needs to find out more, or wants to help and do more, to attend meetings and go places where people are speaking out and giving firm, rational, directed ideas about how to help and what to do. You know, as a single member on the school board, you wish you could wave a magic wand and fix things that seem irrational or not working correctly immediately. It's a bureaucratic system, it moves really slowly. But I know that myself and my fellow members on this board are listening particularly to the concerns of the African-American community, and we want to do better. So, information is power. Oftentimes, we do sit in our silos in our areas, and we just don't know. So, reach out to all board members, give pointed ideas and direction. The crisper, the more direct, and the more informative about what action to take is the best way to do it, at least for me. So, I'd like to thank you for your comments this evening, and I'm looking forward to next year's LCAP, and I hope that every year does improve and does get better.
Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Hanson. First, I just want to say that it would have been very helpful to have a copy of the LCAP. It's my understanding that there was an email that went out that told us that we can pick it up from the front. I don't recall seeing that email. I work a full-time job, and it is very inconvenient for me to come to the district office to pick something like that up. So, in the future, if you can reach out to us, one, individually, and ask how we would like that to be sent to us, that would be very helpful. So, going through this, I don't have anything of reference with your presentation. When, so first off, Mr. Pinkston's comments were, kind of hit home for me. I've had conversations with my people that I had put on this board, and though I feel like you guys have come a great way, a great far away, you know, so far, where we were from the beginning to where we are now, and I know there's been a lot of hard work that's been put into it, we still have a lot more work to do, and I know that you guys know that as well. So, I guess, you know, with, I'm sure that Mr. Pinkston's not the only one that's not going to be staying on this committee. So, my question to you is, have you surveyed our current members to find out what we've done right, what we've done wrong? And that way, we can kind of retain the information that you guys have already done, and it's just not the two of you that know everything.
So, a couple of different things. As Frank mentioned, we had a debrief, and the committee members that attended Tuesday night worked in small groups to chart out their suggestions. That's one area where we've recorded. And then, just today, I don't know if any PAC members who are in the audience have looked at their email, but we have sent today an anonymous Google survey to all PAC members, including any PAC members who resigned or withdrew. So, their assurance is that it's anonymous, and we absolutely want their feedback. It's a pretty comprehensive survey. It covers logistics about the meetings, when, where, day, night, et cetera. It covers rate the topics that were presented on the various dates. It covers rate your knowledge of the LCAP. If you rated yourself low in an area, please tell us why, how we could help improve knowledge. Questions about facilitation, questions about agenda formalization. So, this survey just went out about two hours ago, but that's definitely one other way that we want to learn from those anonymous surveys.
So, are you aware, as of today, which members would be staying and which members would be not moving, not going on?
I have, one member told me Tuesday night she would be resigning. She hasn't informed her board member yet, to my knowledge. And we had one member resign midterm. Carl's resignation was news to me. So, there are a few who are turning over.
Okay, once that's confirmed, can you send out a board communication to make us all aware?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, lastly, on page six of your presentation, you talked about parent participation, decision-making, and making it supported by language translations. I just want to just kind of call out, like, I think you remember, I don't know if you were at our last board meeting, but we had our translator services here, and they left at 8:00, and then we had people that didn't speak English that needed those services. So, just keep that in mind going forward, that we need somebody here all the time, making sure that there's people in the audience, you know, making sure that they don't need those services before they're left, and making sure that that's in the plan, that that money is being secured for that.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Member Orion.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge the work of the team. I know that this is a daunting process, and it is not only time-consuming, but that you are continuing to have to incorporate feedback from the community, particularly when they feel like they're struggling to make sense of very complex subject matter. I will tell you, what's hard for me is being into this process a few years and hearing the same criticisms from many of the same stakeholders, that the process began too late. We've heard consistently, "Why aren't we disaggregating data? Why aren't we showing, empowering our LCAP parent advisory committee members with the nuanced data at the school site level?" Right? We know that quite often, it's difficult to make decisions when you don't have that. You have very incomplete information with which to make these very complex financial decisions. I will say beyond that, you know, having attended a parent advisory committee meeting, not the last, but the one prior, it was astonishing to me, as I noticed, that, you know, three or four women who are mothers in the district, who are incredibly savvy when it comes to budget and policy, in fact, work in state budget and policy, were struggling to make sense of the goals and the feedback that was being asked for in the small group setting. And you know you have a problem when people who, for their careers, get paid to analyze state budgets and complex higher ed and K-12 policy, and they're struggling to make sense of how to provide feedback based on the dashboard or the spreadsheets that are being given to them during, you know, the LCAP PAC meetings. And so, I saw a lot of scrambling going on, a lot of confusion around how to make meaning of the time, and that was, for me, indicative of a larger problem, right? If we truly want parents to become engaged, parents who often don't feel like they have a voice and don't feel like the budget process is accessible, then we have to do a much better job of deconstructing the language, of ensuring that we are providing the data, and that we are providing concrete examples of how the high-level goals translate into action at the site level, and I think we're still struggling to do that. I am curious as to why we continue to hear some of these same items of feedback, and we have not actually adjusted to the extent that we need to, to see gains. So, that is one question that I have for you, and then I have just a final comment.
So, could you restate the question you wanted to, that you're asking the same?
But we have now, for two years, had feedback that the process has begun too late, that we need disaggregated data, that we need greater clarity around finances and goals. So, why haven't we seen changes to the extent that our PAC community feels that those concerns, that those changes that they voiced, were actually met?
We actually do provide a very deep level of disaggregated data. We spent a great amount of time on the California Schools Dashboard, looking at the construction of the dashboard and all of the school site measures. I would say that there is definitely a need to disaggregate more in the LCAP, and we heard that from the community, so we're in process of making those updates now.
Absolutely what they've said, yeah.
So, that's a change we can make for the positive. I think we have an opportunity right now in that we are not writing a brand-new LCAP next year, and we can start as early as we need to, just replacing members very early in the fall.
Yeah.
I think historically, we kind of get stuck with our late-school starting date and wanting to, not being able to really publicize to parents in the community before that measure around Labor Day.
So, I do think that we need to be very thoughtful around the timing and onboarding it sooner, and ensuring that disaggregated data is in the LCAP. It's great that we have the data dashboard, but that is what's being asked for, and that's what I think we need to provide. And then, just one last thing that I want to mention, you know, I had the benefit with Board Member Vang and Board Member Pritchett of going to Fresno, and one of the conversations we had was around how they've done LCAP and how they've tried to model community participation. And I brought back a publication called Building Futures that shows you, item by item, how the dollars were spent based on each and every goal in a very simple way, in language that any parent could pick up and relate to, and how they prioritize the needs of the parent communities based on, you know, more than 70 community meetings they did, including youth engagement town halls. I hope that we look at this and work with our new superintendent to figure out how we can incorporate some of these best practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wu.
Thank you, President Hanson. I'm sad to hear that, you know, some of the old issues that we have continue. I said this last time, and I'll say it again, because I don't think Elliot was here. I believe that we should be selecting our teams in the late winter or early spring. Again, summer's coming up, and that would have been the time to be training new members of the LCAP. And I would really wholeheartedly encourage older members of the LCAP to share part of that training, what they learned, the benefits, the process and the minuses, the pros and the cons, in order to enlighten new LCAP team members. I see that we are continuously improving the LCAP and the LCAP process, and I understand that CDE itself is continuing to evolve in the process. So, I understand why some of the problems still exist. Nevertheless, I think that the most valid comment is that we really, really need to start earlier. So, when the school season starts in September or August, whenever it's going to be, that the LCAP committee is poised to be ready to move forward already, having been kind of trained and knowing what the past budget is, and exploring the types of issues that they want to see concentration of improvements in, so that we can all kind of be proud and targeted, and work with our staff to see what kinds of improvements that we could gain if we are able to direct more resources towards it. So, for this next go-round we have, will be in the second year of the current LCAP, so we're not kind of behind the eight ball, but the summer, along with my colleagues, please identify for us those who are, who we will need to replace, and then hopefully there will be some training for the new ones come this summer, and then they'll be ready to go in the fall, and then come next spring, we can survey those who are serving, who may not want to serve again, so that we can start selecting ones in the spring and be prepared to let them monitor what's going on, and then be trained as well during the summer, so that the following fall, they're ready to roll up their sleeves and go at it. So, a little bit behind the eight ball for this upcoming season, but we're hopefully on track then for subsequent LCAP years.
Thank you.
Member Minnick.
Thank you, President Hanson. And just, and I know my colleagues up here have heard me say this before, but for those of you out that made some comments today about some of the logistics with the LCAP committee, I have asked that we start an ad hoc committee to specifically look at the logistics of how the committee functions. Member Vang is going to join me, and I've started talking with some current members of the LCAP, of the parent advisory committee, so that we can utilize their expertise. I think use of information from that survey is going to be really helpful in that. The reason why, like, some of this hasn't begun already is out of respect to our staff people, and waiting until after the 28th, when we approve everything, and then in July, we can start looking at putting that together. And so, what we'll probably be, realistically be asking, once we kind of brainstorm how this committee may function, is how best to get as much information from current and past LCAP members as possible, to see what's worked, and then also, I will encourage all my colleagues on the board to weigh in as well, and kind of the question being, you know, what are the things that you believe we need to address that are logistic issues? Obviously, we're hearing a lot about timeline as being an issue. I think that right now, our LCAP timeline is set up based on kind of what's required by law, but we can be far more proactive in how we do that. And so, that's, I feel like, the big thing, that and who's sitting at the table. I know that I've had, you know, conversations with Member Rosas about how we best engage student members, and whether she likes it or not, we will be pulling Sarah into these conversations, and starting this conversation. So, and Member Wu, I did write down those same comments about timeline for recruitment of members at the last meeting, so that'll be on our list as well. So, feel free to send me any and all those thoughts, so we can kind of put it all together and start brainstorming what's going to be the most efficient way to get as much information and do this in a way that's proactive, so we're not, you know, looking at the LCAP and the budget on the same night, and that we have plenty of time to do this right. So, I appreciate that, you know, everyone's patience, and once we get through this cycle, like, Remember Wu said, you know, it's late this time, but now we have time to really address it and do this right. So, you know, we have some time to really make this, make this an efficient process, that everyone's voices are heard. So, thanks.
Member Rosas.
Thank you. I feel like for the, for next year's LCAP, when it comes to logistics and the way things are set up and rung, it's very important to keep in mind student voice and the way that we could utilize it the most. I feel like this year, there, we could have had lots of improvements to student voice specifically, and I'm really excited to also be part of that conversation, although I will not be the school board member, school board member Sarah Nguyen, and school board member Michael Minnick will be part of that conversation, and I will also push and help in any way that I can, because I'd really like to see not a separation, not necessarily the students that signed up for LCAP, they signed up thinking that they would be part of the regular meetings, and I feel like that's something that a conversation should be had. A conversation should happen about students being part of that regular meeting, because I feel like... because I feel like that's the best way to u- u- utilize their voice, sorry. But I, I can't wait for that and next year improving that, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Member Vang.
So I won't repeat too much because I think my fellow board members touched on a few items. First, Kathy, I just want to thank you. I know this is tough and I just want to commend you on the incredible work that you've done on LCAP for the past years. I think there are a lot of issues. I mean, I, I've heard the disaggregated data, right, getting the data on time, the infrastructure piece and also, you know, making sure that we train our LCAP PAC members early. And in addition to that, I would say that even if we had all of that, I think my huge concern as a new board member, and pretty soon I can't keep calling myself a new board member because I've been serving for a while, is really the accountability piece and I'm still trying to wrap my head around that and maybe that will happen at the Ju- the June 28th meeting. I think for me, and Kathy, I, I do have a question, I'll follow up. The comment I had is that I just feel like we don't have an accountability process, right? Or we don't have the infrastructure in place to ensure that the services and activities that we're funding are improving outcomes for our students, right? So we can get amazing recommendations from the community, but I don't know if the services that we are providing are really improving outcomes. And I think for me, that's something, I don't know if that's going to be provided at the June 28th meeting, but that's something that I'm really trying to wrap my head around. This question, Kathy, I would really love to hear from you, you know, because you've, you've worked with our PAC members, you've really helped kind of build the infrastructure for this LCAP. I want to hear from you, maybe just one or two highlights of lessons learned and recommendations for the board on improvements for the LCAP process. I know we're going to have ad hoc, but I would love to hear from you because I feel like you, you've seen it from high level up, you've also seen it on the ground and I would, I would like to, to kind of hear from you what you have to say in terms of next steps.
Kind of put me on the spot.
Yeah, I know, but I, I think you probably have a lot of great insights as well because you've-
Honest, well, I don't want to preface it saying honestly, I'm always honest, right? But as you all know, the LCAP is very complicated, not just the document itself, but the way it's constructed, how it interfaces with the new California School Dashboard, you know, that was just launched this year, that is going to be reissued in the fall in even more detail. So that's one piece. Secondly, I think that maybe for a lessons learned, I think that with the committee, folks should come on with the knowledge that they need to do homework in between. So we have a two-hour meeting. Two hours, once a month, is not enough to really absorb the impact, the data, the reading, the legal piece of LCAP. I mean, it's, it's complicated. And so one of my thoughts is, you know, the trajectory of the year doesn't vary that much just based on when data is released and when we do a mid-year update, et cetera. But I think that in the coming year, with the thought that there won't be significant changes to the plan, since it's a three-year plan, we can dive into implementation and monitoring how services are being provided and then maybe reflect that with the committee in, in meetings. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing that out for some thoughts. But it's, it's a lot of learning and we had, I think, eight regularly scheduled meetings, so 16 hours, that's really kind of a crash course on LCAP.
Well, I'd like to thank staff and our appointed volunteers for the work on this project. I know we've got more to hear, this is just the first reading, so we'll be getting more in a couple of weeks. I think you've heard the comments pretty clearly, so let me just say what I would expect going forward. I like Member Rosas' idea of having the students as part of the regular meeting, so I'd like to see that happen for the next go-round. I think it's important for us to have an early start on the appointees and get folks onto the committee as soon as possible. I, I like your idea of, you know, kind of interim homework for the members. They have to understand that, you know, this is important and if they want to be able to be up to speed and be able to be full participants, it's going to take a little bit of work on the side, but you know, it'd be kind of up to us to assign the homework so they know, you know, what it is they should study. I think it's clear from the comments of the folks who spoke, we need to have a document that is more understandable and I know how complicated it is for me sometimes to understand some of these things and I've been reading this stuff for, you know, going on four years now, so it's still, it's complicated, you know, to do that. And I know there's luxury, it's a luxury, I guess, when you, you get to work here, you know, the 40, 50, 60 hours a week and you can immerse yourself in this and learn, you know, how it's presented. We don't really have that same ability. So what I do is, you know, make a recommendation that when you're having your meetings with the LCAP members, you just ask them continuously, you know, what are ways that you can present the information to make it more understandable? And don't give them, you know, not, don't save it for the end of the process at the end of the year, but make that as part of your monthly meeting. What is it that we're presenting you today and how could we present it in a more understandable format, so it's easier for the parents, you know, or, or volunteers to be able to participate? So it makes it as meaningful as possible, it gives them the most tools to be able to give us the feedback that we need. So with that, I don't know if there's, I don't think there's any other comments. Appreciate your time and we'll be seeing you in a couple of weeks. Item 9.2, Gerardo.
Good evening, President Hanson, Mesotha Board and Superintendent Banda. Before I start the presentation, I want to give thanks to Ms. Gloria Chan and her, and her staff for the hard work on the budget document and doing it in a timely manner. They've worked very long days and several weekends. The goal of the presentation is to present a summary of the budget for action at the next board meeting, June 28th, to have a spending authority for the fiscal year 2017-18. The whole budget document is over 180 pages and it's in your package. We realize that the required forms are not user-friendly, so we will try to simplify in our presentation. So we, we discussed the budget process before at the February 2nd board meeting and it's also included in the secretary's summary, therefore we will get right to the point. What is our, our budget in a nutshell? We will also spend some time in our budget assumptions and our next steps. In the, in the, in a nutshell, the revenues are small, our expenses are a patient revenues, we are in deficit spending for 2017-18. We will need to adjust, we need to learn to do with less. For 2017-18, we're projecting a deficit spending. Fortunately, we have found balance to cover this deficit spending. However, we cannot continue deficit spending year after year. The sooner we align our revenues with expenditures, the less painful there is for our district and for our students. We discussed that our revenues are decreasing compared to, to last year, to give you an example, in 2000, this year, 2016-17, our increase in revenues were about $27 million. For 2017-18, our increase in revenues are about $4 million. Yes, we're hearing as yesterday that this potential one-time funds coming, that they are not included in the May revise. However, even with that, we will continue in deficit spending. We have a statutory cost increase year after year, even if our revenues don't increase. Some of the biggest increases that we have seen is, is the increases in STIRS, retirement fund contribution, about $5.7 million and even in, in CalPERS contribution. We also have increasing step and column. This is statutory cost of $17.7 million, we have those year after year. Of all of these items in this list, the only one that we have, something that we could work on it is that the increase in, in health benefits and even that, that is a negotiable item. In addition to the statutory costs, we also make some increases in our budget, including an increase in debt service funds that it was prior, previously paid out of the facilities funds for $2.8 million. The goal of this item is that we, to continue, to use facilities funds for first purpose, that means to maintain our facilities, they highly need district-wide. We also increase as a one-time or a spender learner, we lost the 21, 6, 21 century funds for $3.3 million. We are backfilling that as a one-time for $3.2, $3.25 million. So when you add the $17.7 million plus the $6.8 million, we have increased expenditures from previous, from the previous years to 17-18 by $24.5 million. In addition to the, those, we also have contributions to the general fund. This is a total contribution, not necessarily the, the increase. Our biggest contribution is to especially education programs. We do not receive enough funds from the state and federal to cover especially. We are contributing $58.5 million for that. You were telling the Baron Transportation, our district provides transportation. We receive our funding has not changed, it's 20% less than we received back in 2007-8. Our cost continues to increase year after year, therefore the contribution has, has increased in these areas. Ms. Gloria Chan will take off the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, President Hanson, good evening, President Hanson, Superintendent Banda and members of the board. Gerardo provided you the bigger picture. I'm going to take a deeper dive into the details of the general fund. Details of other funds can be found in your packet. We estimated revenues to be $485.9 million. Unfortunately, being new to the job, I thought our TIC and transportation monies were add-ons on top of our LCFF dollars. Unfortunately, I was mistaken. Transportation and TIC are included in the LCFF calculations. My misunderstanding caused me to overstate our revenues by $6.5 million. I apologize to you, President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, members of the board and Gerardo for my mistake. I have learned from my mistake. Next time, I will have more experience. I will have extra eyes looking at my numbers and the calculations. We will start earlier, so there is time to review.
Thank you.
When I caught this mistake, when I caught my mistake, it was too late to fix it for this board meeting. It will be corrected for our final adoption. Our expenses have not changed. We are budgeting $204, $421.1 million in salaries and benefits. That's 84% of our total expenditures, unrestricted funding, 90% of our unrestricted funding. In addition to salary and benefits, we will spend $21.8 million on books and supplies. We will also pay $2.8 million of our debt service payment out of our general funds. An additional $1.75 million will be restored once the state budget passes and if we receive one-time dollars. Taking our revenues and expenses into account, our ending fund balance will be about $59 million. Our ending fund balance includes $6 million set aside for textbook adoption and $20 million for our reserve for economic uncertainty. First, as you can see in this slide, in 1516, our reserves were at 14.44% below the average district unified school district of 16.45%. For 1718, with our estimated fund balance, we'll have 11% in reserve. This includes our minimum 2%. By 1920, we will be in deficit spending of $20.8 million and our fund balance will be gone. The money goes quickly. To build our budget, we've had some of the following assumptions. There was a cola increase for LCFF and state revenues. Added in a 4, 1.4% step, step and column increase, this translates into about $2.76 million. The increases in our mandatory STIRS and PIRS total about $7.3 million. This is greater than the increase in our revenues of $4 million. We are digging into our fund balance and in future years, we will need to reduce spending to balance our budget. As mentioned in previous board meet, at the previous board meeting, LCFF will be at 97% of targeted funding levels in 2017-18. Our estimated LCFF is $366.6 million. Our minimum proportionality percentage is estimated to be at $59.2 million. We have increased support to career and technical education and continued, and continued support for early literacy, early kinder and pre-K. As already presented in the prior presentation by Ellie and Kathy, other details can be found in our LCAP. Our next steps include bringing the budget to you for adoption on June 28th and then submission to the Sacramento County Office of Education for review. Once Governor Brown signs his budget, our state budget, we will have 45 days to revise our budget. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Do we have any public comment? Mr. Barrios. Not there. Maybe Gerardo can step in for a moment? See if that's on item 9.2.
We have three public comments, Karen Swett, Teresa Flores and Carol Pickensson.
Come on up, Karen. All right, clear the papers, so Karen is, I don't want to scare her. I know lots of papers and numbers is frightening. That's a joke, because I know nothing frightens you of a paper with numbers.
Karen Swett, make, Karen Swett, Making Sense Work.
Welcome.
Choices. On the one hand, you have students first. On the other hand, you have rainy day fund first. Students, rainy day fund. Future rainy day fund. You cannot have both as first. This, this budget, and if you read 12 pages of it, you'll have everything. This budget clearly tells us your choice, your number one priority is to save for a future rainy day. Of course, there are always risks in the choices you make. Are the future rainy days, the so-called doom and gloom risks, greater than those that are clearly, clearly listed on pages three and four of the LCAP? Please, please reread the greatest needs section. Spend some time on it, pay very, very close attention. Back City is clearly in a rainy day environment right now. Choices and risks. This puts the budget, this puts the future doom and gloom budget first. In this budget, your first priority is to save for a rainy day. This budget puts students second, not first. Is that the choice you want to make?
Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Flores, still an organizer of Sacramento-
Thank you, Teresa Flores, still an organizer of Sacramento Act. So I want to again, you know, thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. I specifically wanted to comment on the, one of the last few slides, how is S U Z increasing services for targeted students. I appreciate seeing things like safe haven, professional development. You know, one of the, the, the things that I did note before coming here is that safe haven resolution was passed a few, back in December, I think, so about six months ago, which we appreciated and we were here in support for that. And yet, we know that there are still teachers, you know, at, at every school site have not, not at every school site have been trained. And so I did appreciate seeing some of those things. However, some of the things that we've brought here before, such as social workers, we, which again, we know are increasingly needed and important, particularly for students who are, are struggling, we, I, I did not see those represented in the budget at the level that we have, we believe are needed. There is again, an investment in this, but again, not at the, at the level that meets the need. And so again, I would continue to encourage you to, you know, continue to focus on increasing services and support for the students that need it the most. And, and yes, as you know, others have said, I do understand the, the fiscal realities and at the same time, our students are facing realities right now that are in much need of services and resources. And so again, just urging you to look at those needs, especially for students that need it the most, like English learners, low income students, and students of color.
Thank you.
Carl Pinkston from Community Priority Coalition. I want to make one comment that I wasn't able to make during the LCAP portion of, of the budget, but it's related to this, is that the LCAP is, shows a, an increasing additional funding for school resource officers for the next three years. We believe that should be reduced in proportion to the impact that will take place if you fully implement restorative justice program. So we strongly suggest that there should be an inverse effect as it relates to school resource officers. In terms of the budget, it's clearly the revenue is far too underestimated and the expenditures are far too overestimated, in, in our opinion. Looking at trend lines, there's a couple of things in terms of revenue. We believe if we think this is going to be a destination district where everyone wants to bring their child to for, as a safe haven, we think the ADA is far too low. It, it, it should be increasing, not decreasing. We should take a look at the developments of housing developments in terms of McKinley Park, Curtis Park, and, and those who live out there, in the south area, Delta Shores starting to explode. It may, it won't be in next year, but in a couple of years. Those are the things that we should take a look at, but also your continuing projections of revenue is far too low. I, we, we think it's ten million dollars too low. We also, now, I think you're a little over, you, you overestimated the federal revenue because I think that's going to be a little less than what you projected. In terms of your expenditures, it, I, I'm sorry Diana Rodriguez wasn't here because she would have just went ballistics. As it relates to books and supplies, that has been her consistent concern over and over again. The highest in, in, in the line item that it relates to books and supply has been about sixteen million dollars. And, and it, and it usually is somewhere around twelve, twelve to thirteen million dollars based on actuals, unaudit actuals. We're showing twenty one million dollars. I need to know what you're going to do with twenty one million dollars that you have consistently put in, but you've never spent, that always been somewhere around, you know, twelve to fifteen million dollars each year. So um, I, I, and I think the last point is that the budget, you're going to have to negotiate, the board is going to have to negotiate with the, the, the staff. I understand as an accountant, you want to be conservative as possible. That's your job, but I think your job is to somewhere find a happy medium, particularly in terms of what the needs of the students, because this money has to be geared towards now, not necessarily for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene Anderson. We're talking about the budget. We really need to understand that every child generates the same dollar in Sacramento, except if, unless you're special education or you have a dis, you know, disability, your poverty, or you're bilingual. That's where the additional dollars come in. How we utilize those dollars is something else. And then, when you're talking about engagement, the engagement process period, it comes at the school site, when they decide how the dollars are going to be spent. And if you're measuring the benefit, you're not measuring the benefit for African American kids. And when by law, parents are just following the rules for the black community, they know that their kids have to go to school and if they don't, the district attorney is called in or CPS. And those are the, those are the things that black people really understand. The punishment side, because the benefit side is just not happening. Kids are below grade level and they stay below grade level. This district has not figured out how to ensure to move all kids to grade level. And I asked that as a question in the, the LCAP process. When are you going to measure how well students are doing and if they're at grade level? Because if you never actually measure the benefit for grade level achievement, then these students are consistently behind. And if they're behind, they're not going to school. Because who wants to go to school and be looked at as not being able to achieve? And if we're only going to focus on the punishment side, then we have a lot of kids who are not going and truancy is an issue. And then your, your ADA dollars are dropping off. Well, come on now, you're going to force a kid to be in the seat and still not achieve. And so for years, like I said, working alongside of students who are not benefiting, I'm looking at these kids and suicide is an option for them. And then, you know, and then we're looking at the healthcare crisis in our district for children who may want to commit suicide because they don't have ability to be successful. But we're not holding our own selves accountable for the benefit of students to attend public school system. And that's one, that's what we should be talking about when we're talking about the local control accountability piece. We're not accountable for that. And so there's lots to be talked about, but just not the dollars, not generating dollars and how we're going to pay people. We need to talk about how we're going to ensure that people who are benefiting from the services actually benefit. Thank you.
Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Hanson. I think I got my question answered by Vice President Ryan, but on page fifteen, when we were talking about the budget assumptions for the COLA and step and column, who does not benefit overall?
For the COLA increase, that is the, the state revenues. It includes programs such as the special, that is, that is not for the salaries increase. It's not that, that is the COLA from the state to us. So, so the, all the programs, the, the state funding, that's the benefit. That will, that will apply to all the special, all the programs, including nutrition services, child development, those, that's what that is.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Pinkston's comments. You know, I think all of us on this board have one time another talked about books or programs that need to take place. And I don't know if we really, according to their comments, they don't see them in here either. And I, and I think I've told you before, like, I need additional information. So I just want to remind you that both Member Cochran and I have asked that you sit down with us, and I know that you had agreed. So just make sure that you reach out to us and that we have a meeting with you prior to our twenty eighth meeting.
We'll be happy to that. I went to, talking about other supplies and, you know, that three point two five million dollars, you know, that was a, a decision that, that it was done, made it like in the budget process. So every single item, you know, the money is there, but I might not be in the same, the, the path that how they go, how after school programs is going to use it. So it's there in, in the budget and we discussed in the budget committee and that, that we will reallocate it, we will work from that. Stacy and her team are, are working in, in a plan, you know. Part of that is looking at effectiveness, effectiveness of some of those, those programs. So that will change. It's in the budget, but that might be on the right, right line. And also, you know, at, at this point in time, often time at the school size, they don't have all the, there's a grant, they don't have a big development. One, one of the guidance is that C grant, you know, there was a question about your, your federal revenues are too high. We got a, a, a grant for C grant that is about five million dollars that we did not have it before. So that is, that is in there and their plans that develop is a five-year grant and they working through that. So the money is, is there. So that's why in, in connoisseur places is that less restricted and they move that until they hire those, for the, provide flexibility to the departments or, or school size.
Okay, I guess that's also one thing to keep in mind that when you meet with us, I don't, maybe Member Cochran has other comments, but for me, it would be very helpful because from the, from the perspective of the public, it looks almost like we're hoarding money, right? And I need you to show me everything, bring it down to me so that way when I go out and talk to these people, I know exactly what's, what's going on and what we're using it for.
Yeah, we, we will be happy to do that. And also, I want to share, you know, I want to thank the board and Vice President Wu. We have a, a budget committee and we go into that deep, a little deeper in, in these topics because school finance is, is, is complicated, you know, just, just what it is. We have did, we have a total of five meetings and total, actually six, one since, since, since March, you know, it's like about an hour and a half. So we have developed some, some deep, but we, we will be happy to meet though. I just, just want to share that I think that's something new that we didn't have before. So we very transparent, you know, it is what it is. And however, we just show you what we know as of this point in time, it will change, the budget will change because it's a living document.
Yeah, and as you know, I don't sit on the budget committee and so I feel very disconnected on what, what's going on. So that's why I asked to sit with you. So I appreciate you offering. And then finally, I just wanted to, for, for Mr. Chung, thank you for, you know, offering up your, the mistake that was made. I know that that was not easy for you and I just want you to know that, how much I appreciate you coming to us and telling us.
I have a question, if you can turn to page eight. Uh, the, on, it says the ongoing maintenance transfer to restricted of eleven point three million. Can you explain what that is?
That, this one?
Yes. Second item from the top, ongoing maintenance transfer.
Yes. So that, that item is, the ongoing maintenance is for, for facilities is actually resource eighty one fifty to, to the account. It's where we keep track of all our facilities cost through the, through the maintenance. That includes, most of that is salaries and, and benefits. And to, as part of the LCFF, that part of the budget, because when the, the budget cast, buildings were not maintained, is required that we, by the year twenty twenty one, we reach at least three percent of the total budget. So that money, that has increased like about four hundred thousand this year, but that's what it is. It's just general fund, you know, that we didn't, the state does not give us fund for, specific for facilities. So that's, that's where we keep track of that. At one point in time, we used to have deferred maintenance. That doesn't happen anymore, so that's, that's, that's what it is.
So we're using money that should be going to maintenance and taking, putting it into the restricted fund? Is that what?
No, that's, it is called restricted because the resource is, is part of the, the, the resource numbers is in the restricted account, but it's really general fund unrestricted. It just because that resource does not generate any revenue, it's just an accounting transfer.
So it is actually the maintenance funds are still staying with the maintenance department?
Yes.
And being used for maintenance of our facility?
Yes, but that's not, that's not, not for the district or size for the number of buildings, the size, the, or the age, or, you know, that's, that's kind of, yeah.
Okay. Um, page eleven is this number, the twenty one point eight three million dollars for books and supplies. I remember all the way back to Sean or what was I, Louis Boucher who used to come here, that guy?
Leo Bennett.
Leo Bennett, who used to come, he used to love talking about that. That was when I was on the board for like three weeks. He's been talking about it and it's been like the same dollar amount ever since. So can you put this to rest that we are actually spending twenty one point eight million dollars on books and supplies? That isn't some slush fund that we're keeping for something? So we can explain to folks one way or the other? Tell me, what is this money for?
Yeah, we will send you a, a breakdown detail.
You have that at our next, so make that part of our packet for the June twenty eighth meeting, an itemized list of what we're spending the twenty one eight point eight million on.
We're happy to do that.
And so that'll be in the Friday before our board meeting. So let me just further, our friends in the audience who I know can't wait to see that, that will be on June twenty third at five PM. We have to post that. So I know, stand by at five oh one and you can open that up and see if it's, well, I know June twenty eighth is our meeting, but we put our board agenda packet, it goes out on the Friday before, so on the twenty third. So if it's there and it's real, well, then it's real. If it's not, then let's have a conversation about it on Wednesday, but, because I'm, I'm tired about hearing of that for the last four years. So explain to me if it's real and if it is wonderful, let's.
Very close.
But I'd like to take that off the table so I don't have to keep hearing that year after year after year of, oh, that's some slush fund. Mr. Minnick, you're up.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify something, part of the, you said in, in response to Member Pritchett's question around covering after, out of the budget committee, the twenty first century grant funding. Did I understand you correctly that this budget includes that three and a quarter million, but it's not itemized as such because it breaks into staff and it breaks into like a bunch of other things? But they, but that, that dollar amount has been put into this, identified that, is that?
Correct, and we, we did include it where, where we thought it was most likely it's going to be, but it's not a, while, while we do that, we work very directly with the departments or the schools.
And figure out what are the items that you need.
And we didn't do that for this because of the ti, the timing. So, so that's, that's what I mean. So that might be like, we might have put too much in, in supplies that later on we'll move to contracts.
Right, and which we can move, but the total is, is, is in there.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Exactly.
Great, all right. No other comments. Thank you very much and we will look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you all.
All right, item nine point three, Dr. Taylor and Becky.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, members of the board. My name is Becky Bryant and I'm the Director of Special Education and of the Special Education Local Plan or the SALPA. Tonight's presentation will include a review of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen annual service plan and annual budget plan, which is required by the state to be reported yearly prospectively for the following year. Next, we'll provide an update on initial actions taken since the special education review, as well as our planned actions for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, including how we will measure the effectiveness of those actions. Finally, we will ask the board to conduct a public hearing on the annual service and annual budget plan for the SALPA for next year and then come back for you to approve it in its final form on June twenty eighth, at the June twenty eighth board meeting. it in its final form on June twenty-eighth, at the June twenty-eighth board meeting. We receive a combination of state, federal, grant, and district provided funds to provide special education services to our students. Most of the funds are restricted for a specific use and expenditures need to occur accordingly. This year, as in years past, the district will continue to contribute a significant number of dollars to provide these services as the state and federal funds remain relatively stagnant for special education or have declined from previous years. The district contribution, as Gerardo mentioned in his presentation, um, is expected to be sixty-six million dollars for next year. In accordance with the requirements of the budget plan, we present to you our expected expenditures for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and the broad categories of how we budget and allocate expenditures for our comprehensive services. In your board packet, you receive the annual service report, which is required by the state. I will give you a brief explanation of this report. It lists every site where we provide services, it's rather comprehensive, and the type of services provided on the day the report was pulled, which in this case was December first, two thousand sixteen, our reporting date. As you can see, the first school listed is John Bidwell. The type of facility or code ten in that box is a public day school. The other codes to the right are the types of services, such as three thirty is special, um, specialized academic instruction and four fifteen is speech and language, two of our most common services that we provide. Also in your board packet are the services description, which describes in detail every type of service offered or contracted for through our SALPA. We are a single district SALPA and we must provide a full continuum of services to our students. Our current service delivery models, as of Monday of this week, we had six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine students. Twenty-three percent of them were served in general education without support. Most of those students are receiving speech only. Thirty-four percent in general education with some form of support. We have twelve percent of our students, um, at our inclusive practices sites and twenty-five percent of our students in special day class. Finally, we have six percent of our students currently in non-public schools, including residential treatment centers. Dr. Taylor's going to share with you our next action.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. My name is Iris Taylor, I'm the Chief Academic Officer, and we would now like to briefly share with you some of the actions that have been initiated since the report of the Council of the Great City Schools, uh, that outlined recommendations and findings from the review. These are outlined in more detail in the executive summary, which is included in your board packet, and we provided you with additional copies, um, for ease of access. As a reminder, the district contracted with the Council of the Great City Schools to review its special education programs, um, seeking to understand the improvements to programs and services that could be made. The council conducted the review in November of two thousand sixteen and the board heard the findings and recommendations in May. Since the review, the district has taken initial actions, um, towards an MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Supports, including beginning working with principals to understand their data analysis practices at the site level. We've gathered, gathered information regarding the types of academic, as well as behavioral data principals are analyzing, the frequency and the structures they're doing, they're using to do so. The Special Education Department is reassessing its special, specific special education eligibility assessment teams to determine the best composition of these teams, um, so that we can ensure thoroughness of the assessments that are provided. The department is also reviewing its system for Medi-Cal billing. This was something that came up in the report as, um, an area of concern. And we're analyzing this based on feedback from users, uh, which has revealed that there's some inefficiencies in this system's design, as well as some issues with usability. And then finally, the department has shared the recommendations and findings broadly at the cabinet level, as well as with district staff and with site-level administrators. There are many recommendations in the report of the Council of the Great City Schools and the staff in the council noted that the implementation of the recommendations needed to be considered over the context of a multi-year plan. Upon review, we believe that there are some key actions, though, that we should take next year, which we're describing as a planning and laying the foundation for impactful change. For year one, the actions we will take in regards to developing a multi-tiered system of support are to establish or in, in essence, re-establish a multi-tiered, um, system of supports committee, which will be comprised of a wide range of stakeholders to work with us to develop, um, a multi-level system of supports. And as a part of that planning, we will need to map our existing resources and gaps. So how are we already providing, um, interventions and supports? And that being both academic as well as behavioral interventions. This group will also develop a vision for inclusive education, um, for the district. We'll also assess and study, what are the effective practices that are already in place in some of our schools? And these practices will be used to inform the development of written expectations and board policy regarding a multi-tiered system of supports. And then finally, develop a written three-year implementation plan. We'll also develop a district special education committee comprised of various stakeholders to serve us in, in an advisory capacity regarding special education services. This is something that the council recommended, we've also heard it from our parents and, um, other stakeholders within the district. The next set of actions are in regards to our ongoing data analysis. And for this, we will work with our technology services department to develop a comprehensive data system so that we're easily able to gather data on an ongoing basis, um, that we can easily analyze and disaggregate along lines of race, ethnicity, gender, and other demographic groups. Related to that is expanding, um, the work within our special education department meetings so that we can structure them to, um, focus on building the capacity of staff regarding regular analysis of data and, um, not just to analyze, but also to use that data strategically, um, to inform improvements to the department. We want to institute a regular review of the data within our cabinet space so that cabinet is constantly aware of what's happening with our special education services and then develop a protocol for an annual special education data review and update for you, the board members. Another set of actions would be taken to align our written policies, including revising our special education policies and procedures manual so that it aligns with our, um, also being revised E L master plan and updating those to reflect changes in special education law. Related to that is a revision of our special education webpage so that it's more dynamic, hyperlinked, and accessible for our staff, as well as for our families, um, and then to communicate those changes out to the users. The fifth set of actions would be taken focused on collaborating with our, on our school site, staff, and families to address specific student issues with the implementation of I A Ps, to help them problem solve and strategize, and that if that means going out and sitting down side by side with them, that, those are the practices we will institute. We'll also work with our human resources offices to develop a comprehensive recruitment and retention plan for staffing positions within the special education department and continue to attend, um, recruitment activities offered by the district. And then finally, we'll explore and develop a written plan for decreasing the number of students served in our more restrictive environments, um, with the intent of implementing those for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. And that will involve beginning to collect and track data on the number of students who require settings outside of the general education setting and, and special day classes in non-public schools, analyzing the purpose of these special day classes in our non-public school placements, and then building that structure of support for those students. We recognize that establishing clear measures of effectiveness will be critical for monitoring and assessing progress. And so to this end, we will establish specific indicators and metrics related to a multi-tiered system of supports and implementation and special education goals, which will be analyzed and monitored within the special education department at the school site level, as well as with cabinet and the board. The special education department will develop processes and protocols for engaging in classroom observations, to analyze classroom practice and the experiences of students with disciple, experiences of students with disabilities, and will also integrate them into instructional rounds, which are currently underway within the academic office. Finally, we will solicit feedback from, um, teachers on the effectiveness of our professional learning in a more formalized way and formalize our practices for gathering information from our families and parents around our customer service. So we'll now engage in the public hearing portion of the presentation and then take board questions.
Thank you. Public comments?
Uh, four public comments. Angie Sutherland, Darlene Anderson, Benita Ayala, and Calvier Dacey.
Good evening again, I'm Angie Sutherland. I'm the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee and just wanna share some comments from our C A C members about the annual special education plans. And, um, one of the things is that, uh, we, and we talk a lot about is inclusion, inclusion and inclus, inclusivity as a structure, um, and how this should be a priority, um, not just with our special ed, uh, administration and, and staff and teachers, but across the whole system. Um, and so we're urging the board to ensure to the best of, of your ability that the children have access in the general curriculum, in the general class environment, um, and that inclusion efforts for students with disabilities start to progress. Sadly, this year they did not, the inclusive practices did not progress, and also transportation dollars are a huge amount, takes up a lot of, uh, the general ed funding and the special ed funding, and then we know that the district would like to reduce that, um, and so would we. And there doesn't seem to be a coordinated, organized, um, supervision from principals. There's limited accountability for special education from principals and there's a lot of individuality for schools since administrators have such autonomy. Um, a realignment and accountability should be a priority, not just for those in special education. Students with disabilities are often left out of extracurriculars and specialized programming at sites. Support and training for teachers and staff needs needs to be ensured so that students have access to field trips, sports, arts, and other during and after-school enrichment activities. And, and C A C agrees with the recommendations from the Council for Great City Schools and we're looking forward, we hope that we can be a part of the MTSS expansion and involved in that. And we gave a letter to President, um, Hanson and we asked that a standing board committee, a, a board committee of, of you guys be formed and that we could be a part of that to follow up on the audit. We are holding a meeting in October and we would like to invite, um, the group, whatever group forms, to, um, discuss a roundtable discussion with us on, um, improvement plans, objectives, timelines, and progress made. We recommend that the board approve also a professional services contract with someone to come in and help, um, tackle some of the barriers in, um, working with the different, uh, unions, realigning the budget, and integrating students with disabilities into school site plans and overseeing, overseeing the establishment of a district-wide MTSS program. And, um, lastly, I just wanna say that, um, it's difficult for, for parents, um, when there's not inclusive settings and having to go from school site to school site to find the right blend at that grade level. Um, so we should have, all school sites should be inclusive and all classes should be inclusive. Thank you.
Good evening, Darlene Anderson. Wow, special education is not a disease. Children with special needs, they're just children. How we provide those services is critical. They should be included in regular schools and yet we transport them around like money and they are money to school sites. The number of classrooms that children are placed at certain schools have to do with their budget, but guess what? It's not written in their single plan for student achievement. No services for children with disabilities are included in the SIPSA. So we don't have parents who are participating at school site level and you can't measure those benefits. And so when we're talking about how we provide services, it's critical, the, critical that we understand that behavior is an issue of humans and transition is an issue when kids need to transition from task to task. But if the district is going to continue to allow everyone in their, everybody to document kids and put a jacket on these kids and they are going, that jacket follows them to juvenile hall and it started in kindergarten. And the janitor might have wrote something that the kid threw a spitball, but guess what? It's in that, it's in, it's in there and it follows them right down to juvenile hall. I just have a problem when we're not, when we're not talking about children as if they're all the same. And I have a problem when teachers can choose who they wanna work with because it might be more difficult to work with a kid with disabilities. But guess what? My son said severely mental retarded and communication handicapped and would not benefit from public education. Guess what? He graduated above proficient and that was because he had a mother that, like me, I'm a tiger and I was not gonna let him not be successful in America. And I just think that when we're allowing school sites to give kids Z-coded curriculum, which is modified before they even try to do the work, and we're disproportionate for African-American children in special education. So when you go to Luther Burbank, whoever has a summer program, look at how many black boys are in that, that site. And, you know, there are just so many issues that I don't care if we have our own SALPA, we're not providing services equally to all children. And every administrator, not just Mrs. Bryant, but every administrator should be responsible to ensure that all kids are making progress. And that should be a part of the single plan for student achievement and we should be measuring each school site. These kids do not have a, a, some kind of disease that's gonna catch over and jump onto other kids, but the behavior and the, how do you call this bullying that happens with kids with disabilities because they're in special ed and, and just the mirror concept that one, some people say, oh, you don't want your child to be labeled as dis, disabled because guess what? Special education is not a disease, it's just old kids learn differently and thank you.
Thank you, darling.
And have a good evening. And we need more support for the division of special education. It is just not something that's separate. It is a part of public education. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Benita Ayala. Uh, I debated on what I decided to talk about tonight, but I figured my fellow parents would speak more on, um, would speak more on issues and concerns that they had. And I'd like to give you what the services provided for a student to give you a different output. My son is 15 and been in the school district for 13 years. He has received occupational therapy. He has received speech therapy. He has received adaptive PE. He has a one-to-one aid. He has a behaviorist. Everything you probably see listed on there, my son has received. Two weeks ago, we were in IEP, and my son was considered to have quite, quite a bit of behaviors. He's 15 years old. He stands about 6'8", and Ms. Bryant was in there. And the behaviorists came in and shared with us with the report. And in that report that I've never received in his 13 years of being in special ed, she said, "Today, I come before you to share with you that this young man has no behaviors I have to report about." It took all I had to fight back the tears because that's something that I have never heard. So I want you to realize that if you review these things, that even though I could tell you other things as far as complaints, sometimes you need to hear the good. And I stand before you as a product, as even though there are other challenges and issues, but those services that you see that are on there helped him to get there. Do we have more hurdles? Oh, absolutely. But that one, it brought tears to my heart. It brought me to my knees because it's something I've never heard. She was in tears. She was in joy. I like to say Becky was crying, but I don't know if she was or was not. So I wanted to explain that to you because I know you hear a multitude of different things, and nearly on, I might be one of those to bring you those things. But those individual services that you saw, my son has been receiving them for over 13 years, and he still is. And I know that's one of the reasons why we were able to be in that IEP meeting and they were able to share that he didn't have those particular behaviors that we've had and seen off and on from elementary school to middle school to his first year of high school. So I just figured it'd be good to come up and just share a testimony with you of what the services provide.
Thank you very much.
My name is Calviere Dacey, and I'm a parent of a special ed child. He's going to be moving on to fourth grade. So I've been looking at other campuses because the campus that we have wouldn't, cannot accommodate his needs. So my main topic is field trips. I'm, you know, kids need that time outside of the classroom to enrich and learn things that they wouldn't be learning in the classroom. And what I got from a lot of the teachers that I was talking to was that we're not going to do field trips because it's too hard for us. We don't have the resources. We don't have the support. We don't, we can't get the buses in time because there's a list or there's something that you need to do to get the buses if you want to plan a field trip. So all of these things take into effect, and I, and it was every single teacher that I was talking to for this new camp, new campus for my son, and they all said pretty much the same thing. And I, I just feel that a lot of general ed kids get to go to field trips because they don't have the behaviors and they don't need the extra support, but our kids do, and so they kind of sort of fall off that track. And...
Thank you. It's important for us to know.
So I had two questions. Actually, one is for Angie Sutherland. If you can come back, I'd be interested in asking you a question. And the other is for Becky. So Becky, I would like you to explain, for those of us who are still learning the world and its myriad complexities of special education, what Appendix D is and why, in fact, Appendix D, if in fact it is aligning with federal policy, is an item that we have to negotiate?
Well, Appendix D is something that was negotiated into the contract many, many years ago and at a time when our students with IEPs, our students with more significant disabilities were not invited into general education classrooms as either their primary placement or as an opportunity to participate at all. I believe it was the district's intent to be able to provide that. We had had a recent very high-level court case that cost the district quite a lot of money. And so provisions needed to be made to welcome more students with disabilities into the general education setting. That piece of the contract has continued. There's been various iterations renegotiated, and I believe part of the current plan is to continue to, to work on language that is more supportive of our students.
So, thank you, Becky. My question for Angie is hand-in-hand with that. I know we have discussed over the last year, two years, the concerns around a move away from inclusive practices. And so I would like to hear from you, you know, firsthand, what you believe are the core issues associated with that move away from inclusive practices?
You know, I really don't know. It could be a combination of budget because we were told that it would require the hiring of more teachers to expand that. But then I know that there are concerns with the supports that teachers are receiving also at the school sites. So I believe, that's my understanding of kind of where, perhaps, but Becky might be able to explain it in more detail.
Thank you, Angie. Becky, did you have anything you want to add?
Just that there have been multiple perceptions in implementing inclusive practices. One, that it's a way to reduce services to kids. That's not at all what it is. That there's a way that it costs or to save money. That is not the case. Our students who are in special day classes, if we were then to have their primary placement in general education, would require additional seats in those classrooms, and that's where the requirement for additional teachers...
Okay.
...lies.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I, I will tell you, I'm very appreciative of the report and the subsequent follow-up. I think it's, you know, essential information that frankly puts us in a place where we have been now empowered with a real spotlight on our inefficiencies and what that means in terms of student impact. And so I'm looking forward to see how you implement some of the recommendations and the outlined timeline that you've shared with us tonight. And then I also hope that as you bring in the parent advisory groups, there is a whole communications element around that because we talked about all of these various areas where we feel like we are falling short with students, but the communication of the services themselves is still such a difficult piece for so many of the families that I talk to throughout the district. And so I would hope we would utilize some focus groups with parents that we have who've been active for quite some time to help us shape that messaging in a way that makes our services more accessible.
I've got a question. I'm looking at the Year One Actions, and I know we've talked in the past about an BUDS person, a liaison for families or parents that have concerns or questions or complaints or, you know, need help. What do we have in play? Are we going to be doing that? Is that something we have or are going to be doing?
We, at the direction of Superintendent Bonda, this year, we were able to contract with an independent person to serve as, she's called the Independent Dispute Resolution Specialist. She has helped quite a few of our families throughout the year behind the scenes, some that I don't even know of, and that's the purpose of her assistance, her assistance to the district and for the families. And I am hopeful that she will continue with us next year because I think she's been a great help to help our families understand how to navigate systems.
Great. I guess that can be maybe something that's included then in the Year One Actions, that just kind of keeping that going and figuring out a way just to make sure that families know how to get in touch with that person and, you know, make sure that it's on the website and shared. Obviously, I'm sure it's already shared with the CAC, but just how to get that out to the community so people know that that, there's a person there who can help them so folks don't get lured away by some of the couple predatory law firms that we have that, you know, like to end up costing us lots of money where we could instead be investing that into our students. I'm also concerned about the Appendix D. It's something we've heard about for a couple of years. I would like to think that our union leadership will be addressing that in the negotiations, and I hope they take that seriously and work on Appendix D. It's something that is long past due, and the fact that we've ever had any lawsuits where we've had to pay money for that because of our failure and their failure to address that is tragic. And I certainly hope that we don't waste any more money on that and instead have some action on that and have it solved in the next couple of months. So let's hope that folks can be, you know, come to a proper conclusion on that. I think there's a, obviously, there's, you know, more work than we can ever hope to be done on this, so it's got to just be chipped away and chipped away at it. I appreciate getting the letter from Angie, asking for some, you know, some specific requests on a standing board committee. I think that we need to work on this, and I'd be happy to meet with you, particularly because we're going to be welcoming our new superintendent, and so there's an ability there to speak with him early on in his tenure about how he'd like to address this issue. It's clearly something that's not only important for the students, you know, it's important for the board members, and it's something that the district invests an awful lot of money on. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can with the resources that are there. So, you know, I'll be happy to continue to be involved in this and be willing to meet and help move that item. And I'd be happy to talk to my fellow board members about exploring what we can do for a, a standing committee on special education. Board Member Minnick.
I just had a quick question. I really appreciate this because it's kind of a high-level overview, and I really appreciate the energy that's going into this so quickly after this report was, was brought to us. I just had a specific question. It's actually not about what you presented here, but around the comment from the, the mom who spoke earlier around field trips. And I've just, I'm just trying to understand, is that common that, that we're in situations where we can't accommodate the, the situation? Because I was under the impression that we're required to make the reasonable accommodation. So I just wanted to see if you could just, I know it's a little bit in the weeds, but just address it since she's here and the comment just came up.
So in terms of field trips, we actually provide teachers with opportunity to take one a year. That's not a lot, but to make sure that there's, we can set up transportation for that. There are some restrictions due to time with our busing system. I think in terms of it's too hard and there's not enough support comments speaks to the additional needs that our students have. And when schedules are changed, sometimes that's very unsettling. There's the, you know, possibility of increased behaviors and, and, and so that all has to be accounted for, whereas a neurotypical child would just, you just take them out the door and take them on their way. But there is, there's a lot of pre-planning and preparation.
Great. Well, no more comments. Thank you very much for that. On to Item 11.1, Harado.
on the updates provided, provided by the California School Board Association on the revised Board Policy as language regarding acceptance of gifts or instructional materials reported to the Board, donor appreciation, and incorporated conditions. While we greatly appreciate donations, the Board shall reject any gift which may directly or indirectly impair his authority to make decisions in the best interest to the students or his abilities or commitment to provide equitable educational opportunities. Before accepting a gift, the Board shall carefully consider any conditions or restrictions imposed by the donor to ensure their consistency with the district's vision, philosophy, and operations. If the Board believes the district will be unable to fully satisfy the donor's conditions, the gift should not be accepted. This policy is intended to create practices that adequately safeguard public funds, provide for accountability, and ensure compliance with all state and federal laws. This policy recognizes our community partners to support additional educational opportunities for our students. In summary, this policy ensures all donations are in the best interest of the students to provide equitable education opportunities. And Board Policy 3290 was reviewed by the Board Policy Committee two times on January 27, 2016, and again April 7, 2017. And this is the first reading with the action of the June 28 Board Meeting.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
There was no public comment. That's not...
Any, no public comment? Any board questions? This is just a first reading. We'll be hearing more about it. Very good. Thank you very much. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
And, and Friends.
Friends.
Becky, Matt, Denise, come on down.
Hey. Well, good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Bonda, and members of the Board. My name is Iris Taylor. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. And tonight I'm joined by Matt Turkey, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Denise Leah Grandis, our Coordinator English Language Arts, and we'd also like to thank Belinda Bridgewater for joining us tonight. She's the Principal of Isadora Cohen Elementary School. We are here tonight to share with you the district's work to increase literacy and implement the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts, or the CCSS ELA. In tonight's presentation, we will first provide you with an overview and the driving governance for the district's focused work on improving literacy and English Language Arts standards implementation. We'll also share financial considerations, outline the components of our implementation framework, and describe major initiatives for each of those. And then we'll also share our results to, our results to date, which reveal that progress has been made, yet there is a great deal of work to be done to close achievement gaps. We'll conclude with lessons learned and next steps. The reason for our focused work on literacy and the ELA Common Core Standards implementation is found primarily in the goals of the district's strategic plan, which call for us to graduate students who are college, career, and life-ready. We know that strong literacy skills and high compet- high competencies with the English Language Arts is a critical component of this readiness. Our work is also guided by the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and the California English Language Arts English Language Development Framework. These documents describe the new, more rigorous expectations for literacy that students are required to exhibit in the 21st century. The competencies for being college, career-ready in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and language are outlined on this slide, and these come directly from the Common Core. Let me just call your attention to a few of them, specifically numbers three, four, and seven. These call for students to be able to respond to different demands of task, audience, and purpose when both writing and speaking, to not only understand what they read and view, but also to critique it. And finally, to be able to understand other perspectives and cultures which may very well be the strongest evidence of a truly literate person. Here, we outline the financial considerations for our literacy and English Language Arts Common Core work. The district has allocated approximately $8.3 million to support literacy development and the implementation of the Common Core. These funds support staff such as the ELA Coordinator and Training Specialists, professional learning for teachers. We purchase supplemental resources such as classroom libraries, and we will engage in the ELA, we will engage in an ELA instructional materials adoption in 2017, 18. Denise Leah Grandis will take the next question.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Denise Leah Grandis. I'm the ELA Coordinator. We have a video for you. A video with student voices for you to hear as a sampling of results of our literacy work I filmed last week. Very good.
Some books are funny and some books are, um...
Improvise. Let it load. There we go.
Some books are funny and some books are, um, educational, and some books are about information about things. So that's what I like the most about books.
I found out there was more of books that I liked, and so I kept reading those type of books, and I got more into reading.
It depends on what book it is. Like, um, I like mysteries, like this book.
That's why when I grew up, I want to be a librarian. It's because there's like a whole bunch of books that I want to read.
Reading kind of corresponds with writing, so like, as much as you read, you'll get better and better.
If you want to be a writer, you have to be a reader.
I see both reading and writing as a skill that's really important in life.
I read to get smarter or intelligent, and I love books. Even when I feel like playing video games, I read at night.
You need to be able to read so when, like, somebody asks you something and they ask you the words, you can try to help them.
I think it's important because it corresponds to all the other subjects in school.
I'm getting more good at it because I have lots of books.
Overall, I just like reading.
At my school before this one, I wasn't a really good reader, but now, since I have these different teachers, they've taught me how to read and be better at reading. So now I like to learn reading.
Right? So just want to comment, you can hear our teachers' work. You can hear our teachers' influence and guidance and the student voices in this video. The rigorous and demanding Common Core State Standards and the supporting pedagogy nurtures and grows strongly literate, strongly literate individuals. We have an implementation framework with five strategies that grow and support this work. And the five strategies are: capacity building, instructional materials pedagogy, assessments for learning, communications and stakeholder engagement, and technology infrastructure. So... I just want to join in the problem with the video. We'll look at these one at a time. Capacity building. So leadership capacity is growing through instructional rounds. This year, the academic office led 27 sets of cross-site instructional rounds attended by principals, assistant principals, and teachers. The academic office will continue to provide professional learning opportunities to support teachers with standards implementation and instructional pedagogy. This includes professional learning sessions during the summer and school year, and the site work of district training specialists. Support staff capacity building occurs at district workshops. Thank you, honey. To support the teachers with the standards implementation, the district has developed the Common Core aligned curriculum maps for ELA. The curriculum... The curriculum maps specify supports for our ELS, our students with disabilities, struggling students, as well as students identified for gate services. They also include links to digital resources such as sample tasks, lessons, and units of videos of effective instruction. Teacher-selected supplemental materials and novels in middle school are currently in use and available to support standards implementation. Our starter classroom libraries of approximately 180 titles each were distributed at the beginning of this school year to all K-6 classrooms, regular ed, and special day classrooms. Instructional use of the classroom libraries to nurture our students' literate lives through independent reading is supported by a one-hour classroom library tutorial posted on the ELA website. The ELA/ELD materials adoption process has begun with a first meeting in May, and summer meeting dates planned for June and July to review materials. A pilot will follow the review, and then a recommendation to the Board is planned for spring 2018. Because implementation of the Common Core Standards requires that assessment practices change from a sole emphasis on multiple-choice assessment items to those that allow greater insight into student thinking, another key lever is a focus on shifting the district's assessment practices. An assessment system to evaluate student achievement as well as monitor student progress is vital to attaining maximum results toward the goal of high levels of ELA and literacy achievement. The district has established an assessment committee for the purpose of identifying ELA as well as mathematics assessments to be used formatively to assess students' progress toward meeting the Common Core Standards. The committee is a collaboration with SCTA, UPE, and is comprised of site administrators, teachers, and district staff from the different departments, including Assessment, Research and Evaluation, Curriculum Instruction, Multilingual Gates, Special Education, and State and Federal Programs. The district has taken great strides to deepen stakeholder awareness. We have a user-friendly parent-family webpage, and on this webpage are the locally-developed Common Core Parent Guides for ELA in multiple languages that include a description of what students will learn in each grade, activities that parents can do with their homes, with their students at home to support their child's learning, and a snapshot of the new assessments. Right, let me go here. The district has made the development of its technology infrastructure another key lever in its Common Core implementation. The academic office is working closely with technology services on the integration of technology to accelerate student learning. A primary emphasis of the work has been the implementation of Google Apps for educators system-wide. Through Google Apps Professional Learning, teachers are learning how to utilize technology to engage students in academic discourse and collaboration. Teachers are also exploring apps and resources to engage students in more rigorous academic tasks involving literacy. Now, I'd like to introduce Belinda Bridgewater, Principal of Isadora Cohen. She'd like to share her experiences specific to the grant work that's going on.
Okay. Thank you, Board Members and Superintendent Banda, for this opportunity to speak about the positive impact the Growing Lifelong Reader Grant has had on the literacy of the students at Isadora Cohen. Through the grant, we've received two Chromebook carts, and the teachers are using these carts to do what we call interactive response journals using Google Docs. They're also using them to have students read text online as well as having discussions through chats. The grant has also allowed us to sponsor the SPAR Two Literacy Nights with a focus on a love to read with a campfire theme. At both literacy nights, teachers set up stations that allow the students, along with their parents, to engage in reading activities that focus on genre and text. So some of the stations that we did included reading lyrics around a campfire, informational how-to text, having our students read instructions on how to put together a tent, and then what their parents actually put together a tent. And for our little kids, reading a recipe and making s'mores for their parents. Also, in another station, students were reading digital texts with their parents, showing them how to navigate those types of things, and also reading texts in different languages. In this one, we had students listen to a teacher read, as well as we had a parent read in Spanish. The grant thoroughly has allowed us to purchase books based on a reading survey of our students. So when our books came in, as I'm walking around and walking into classrooms, I'm seeing just a vast array of these books sitting on desks and in the hands of kids, and I picked up some that I was interested in reading myself. We've also placed all of our extra books in our Cougar Store, and students are able to purchase those books for one Cougar buck, and we've sold out. And also, my parent liaison at the school site I'm at now has been there for about 14 years, and she sat down with me and said, you know, we've never had this much interest from our parents in requesting books for their students. Also, we've given away quite a few books to our ELL parents who are also learning the language along with their young scholars. And as I'm working with my kids out on the playground, I'm beginning to hear them talk more about the books that they're reading as they're standing in line for lunch and breakfast. And lastly, I just want to say that the professional development that has come along with this grant has also given teachers a fresh way of looking at reading instruction, more of a way that allows our students to have choice as well as the exploration of text. So overall, we appreciate the grant because it's helping us instill a love of learning in our scholars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, and members of the Board. My name is Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm going to start off by talking about some of our results. We have reviewed our performance compared with other local school districts, the county and the state. The percent of students who met or exceeded standards in our district does not currently match the performance of either the county or the state. Our overall growth from 2015 to 2016 is 4%, which mirrors the growth of the county. Here we see a summary of the overall performance of our district, grade levels over two years. There's been an increase between 2% and 5% for students meeting or exceeding the standards at every grade level. The dashed green line at 39% is the district average. Here we see the ELA performance disaggregated by ethnicity. Achievement gaps exist for African-American, American Indian, Hispanic, and Pacific Islander students. While there are gaps, all groups of students saw improvement in performance from the previous year. Here we see ELA performance disaggregated by non-ethnic student groups. Some of the highest-performing students in our district are initially fluent English proficient and re-designated fluent English proficient, who are scoring at around the same level as our non-economically disadvantaged students. The largest achievement gaps exist for English learners and students receiving special educational services. Going on to key lessons learned, the district has learned many lessons since initial implementation of the Common Core State Standards. There are no shortcuts to deep learning and changing instructional practice. The shifts in instructional practice required by the Common Core are a major cultural challenge and require time, continuous learning, and collaboration. An infrastructure of support is vital for both students and adults. Bringing the Common Core State Standards to fruition is a huge undertaking that requires commitment from all layers of the system. The next steps in the district's standards implementation include the following: continue to expand and improve the professional learning for staff; build upon the ELA curriculum maps, including growing the bank of electronic resources available; expand the integration of instructional supports for diverse student populations into our professional learning; expand the instructional supports available, including videos of effective practice, text resources, sample lessons, and units; refine the district's standards-aligned assessment practices; expand the district's parent and stakeholder communication and engagement strategies; build the capacity of teachers and leaders in collaborative planning and analysis of student work; continue to engage teachers and leaders in instructional rounds; and finally, develop a multi-tiered system of supports to provide academic support and interventions for all learners. This concludes our presentation on literacy and the English Language Arts Common Core State Standards, and after public comment, we'll be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Geraldo, any public comment on?
No public comments.
Wonderful. And there's no board questions, so, oh, oh, nobody pressed their button, but now everyone did press their button. Quickly, please, because that item was 20 minutes instead of the 10 that it was scheduled for. So, member Ryan.
I will be quick, because, of course, lifetime literacy is the difference between moving out of poverty and actually having access to opportunity and falling behind. A couple quick questions. I very much appreciate your work, but I am curious, when we see the largest achievement gaps for African-Americans? Who target services for those?
So one of the things that Belinda alluded to in her, when she was discussing the Growing Lifelong Readers Grant, and what we were intentional in doing when we selected texts for our classroom libraries was around the selection of culturally responsive texts. And just knowing that, you know, students...
And just knowing that, you know, students being able to see characters who look like them is a huge motivator in terms of wanting to even read. Other things like within our, and not specifically to English Language Arts, but absolutely related, is within our English Language Development professional learning, the focus on language development, not just for English learners, students who are identified as English learners, but for students who primary language may not be, say, a standardized dialect. The strategies and supports within that work in helping teachers to support non-standard English learners as well as more traditional English learners is a huge part of building their capacity in terms of literacy and language development. So those are two instances. We repeatedly speak about the need for a multi-tiered system of supports, and to be able to provide targeted interventions, being able to analyze data and to know exactly where students are, just, there was a, you may have heard it, the report on NPR the other day around the discrepancy and the disparity in terms of performance of African-American male students in relationship, the gap is, is not a gap, it's a chasm, right? So our ability to know where those students are in terms of their, their reading needs, their gaps in their, in their reading is, is critical. And then being able to provide targeted, specific interventions and supports in small group spaces is, is a major component of the work that we are striving to do through a multi-tiered system of supports. So there are sites that are already beginning to do that work, but system-wide, we, we're, that's where we're, we're trying to get to.
Looking to exemplars in other districts?
Exemplars in other districts and exemplars, we, even within our district, we have sites that are doing some pretty wonderful things. John Bidwell, we've had some data recently on John Bidwell, showing how they are, the gains that they're making, particularly with their African-American and Latino students, is a place that we should look and see and dig into, like, what are the practices within our district, and also what are the practices outside of our district?
Woo.
Thank you, President Hanson. I want to thank you, notwithstanding the fact that this is kind of a clinical presentation. Reading Matters, and I, and I really, really want to wholeheartedly thank you for the efforts in literacy. I just wanted to share with the, with the board, and this is kind of an aside, that I had invited the, the executive director of the Library Authority to come down because she was going to tell us about the Summer Reading Matters program and the prizes that the students could win for winning full books, and the only, and the day she came down, she goes, there was no board meeting, that was May 18th. So I'm going to fill in for her, and I just want to share with the public, and I know tomorrow's the last day of school, if today isn't the last day of school, it's going to get, be difficult to get the word out to the children, but I think it's also important to, especially when, during the summer, they, if they don't read, they're going to slip back in terms of their educational progress, that I used to use the summer as the opportunity to read for fun. And that was the opportunity to mentally explore worlds that I wasn't otherwise allowed to explore because of the rigors of the academics. And if we can get that message out to our children, and during the summertime, and many of our libraries will be providing meals during the summertime, that especially the, our children who are on free and reduced lunch, an opportunity just to go and have fun during the summer and not really, really realize that they're exercising their minds and they're continuing to learn. If we can get that message out every year before the end of the school year, that would be so helpful, I think, to the children. Can't force them to read, but once they're exposed to it and they have fun reading, I think they will drive their, themselves to read more and more, but instilling it in them and letting them then decide that they want to continue, this is the greatest opportunity. I think that we can fill our children with, particularly during that three-month void in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Bing.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I did have some questions, but I wanted to piggyback off of what, trust you, we just talked about summer learning. Actually, in Area Five, what we're also doing is collaborating with the city and the public library. So for our students, if they read five books, in addition to the prizes, what we're also doing is for every five books that they read, they get a free swim pass to the neighborhood pool, right, so that we can increase access to our neighborhood pool, so we'll be pushing that out as well. I did have a question. I wanted to know if there are any limitations that the board should be aware of that's facing our small libraries? So that's my first question. And then the second one, I was wondering if it's possible, on Slide 16, if I could get the disaggregated data for race and ethnicity for the Asian category, because I know that if you disaggregate that, we might be seeing a different story, and so I would like it, if, if possible, if you could send me the disaggregated data for that.
So I will, I'm looking over at Elliot, because I, I think that the way the state reports this is in the aggregate. Do you know, Elliot, if it's possible?
So we can disaggregate reliably by the state sort of mandated and standardized student groups. There are other parameters that we can employ, but they're not mandatory, and so they won't necessarily be consistently representative of the data.
So internally, as a district, do we collect the disaggregated data? Not just on this, this indicator, but I'm assuming other indicators as well?
I'm sorry, I didn't, could you restate the question?
So internally, as a district, right, because I know for state categories, they clump APIs. I'm wondering, as a district internally, do we collect disaggregated data on APIs?
We are able to disaggregate all of the data that we collect by all of the student groups and other parameters that are consistently standardized by the state. So we are able to disaggregate all of the information essentially that we collect. There's just a limitation on the parameters and groups that we can slice and dice by to be consistent with the state.
Okay. And I guess I'll have a follow-up meeting with you, Elliot, because I want to learn a little bit more about the limitations of what that is, because I think that it's really important that we begin to be able to give that, that data publicly, because I know board meeting after board meeting, I see the API data, but I, I'm curious to know actually what the data is for, if you were able to break that up for Southeast Asian, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the other question was the limitations around the libraries. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I get back to that.
Yes, so, so we shared with you some data just in terms of our library services at the elementary, middle, and high school level, and we know that library services at the elementary level are primarily influenced at, determine at a site level, whereas our secondary library services are, there's per contract, an allocation of FTE at the secondary level, okay? So in terms of limitations, I would say, you know, the disparity, the greatest disparity that we see is at the elementary level.
Any other questions? Member Bing. Okay, just wondering there. Member Pritchett.
Sorry, I think we're all getting punchy tonight. All right, I'll keep mine, mine short. First off, I just wanted to mainly thank Ms. Bridgewater for coming out after a long day of being in your school site and giving us the principal, principal perspective of it, and I really did enjoy that video, by the way, of seeing the kids and seeing their perspective. My, I have one question. I know that you and I have had discussions over the last, like, six months about our libraries closing, and there's several of our sites that have lost their librarians. So how does this correlate to closing libraries when our kids need that?
So one of the things that we have highlighted here is, and it's not, again, I don't want to create an either-or argument, libraries are absolutely a critical service, right, particularly at the elementary level. We currently have a way of staffing that is driven by the site, right, and sites use their funding to make various decisions about staffing libraries. What we have done within this work, as Denise shared earlier, is to provide classroom-level libraries, right? So we have invested in the provision of classroom-level libraries because that's, the students are right there, they can go grab books easily, trying to create a wide selection of library, books, texts within classrooms. Through the growing lifelong readers grant that Belinda spoke about, we have been able to even supplement on top of the books that, that everyone receives, our growing lifelong readers schools have received even more, and then compounding that with digital texts that allow students to have, there's so many free resources that are available digitally. So those are some ways that we are just trying to, again, create that, that love of reading and love of, of, of literature and all types of texts through classroom libraries, through digital texts, through growing lifelong readers, I'm going to be quiet, Jay, students get to, get to take books home, right? A big part of that grant is that kids have to be able to have text in hand that they get to keep. These are my books.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I like that idea, but I, you know, I just want us to keep in mind that, you know, and I'm sure that I'm preaching to the choir, but being a library shows a kid skills that they can't get anywhere else. It teaches them to be in a quiet place and how to study properly, how, I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't need to go into discussion about it, but just something to keep in mind. And then I, it always surprises me, like, I know at school site levels, when they're doing their school site budget with the, with their, I just lost the name of their, their group, their council.
School site council.
Council, yes. You know, I, you guys are making the hard decisions of like, what do we cut, what do we don't, you know? It seems to me like us as a district, we should be trying to figure out how we can supply these libraries at each and every single site, and not just leave it up to the school sites to figure out what they're, what they're going to cut from their students. Thank you.
I mean, it's clear that we're not spending enough time talking about this for something that's obviously so important, and obviously important to all the board members. I mean, and I know there's not much else that's more important than kids learning how to read in school. It's pretty basic. And while we're doing our budget and not being able to align our, having libraries in schools with the budget while we're starting to do that, I hope our, my fellow board members will be thinking about the budget in the next couple of weeks, and maybe there's some opportunity there for us to prioritize, you know, what we obviously all think is something that's really critical, so. Very timely, but I think we need more time on this issue, so. I'll look forward to figuring out a way that we can schedule it earlier in the agenda so we can have something more substantive, so. Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, just a quick comment, that in, in, you know, reviewing the, the presentation, we talked about it's a lot of information to take in in a 10-minute, what was this supposed to be, 10-minute presentation? And, and so what we talked about is, is exactly what you just mentioned, coming back on a regular basis, or perhaps dedicating an hour and a half to do a work-study session or a working session where we can actually be able to get into the data pieces and be able to have some activity. So I, I agree with you. I think that this is, a lot of information to take in at one time, but you guys did an awesome job of pulling that together, and thank you for coming in and being a part of that as well.
Great. Thank you. Item 11.3, Consey.
Board President Hanson, Superintendent Banda, members of the board, since I provided such a dispassionate presentation, as Board Member Woo said a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to, due to a cold, and I think Ms. McCarron might provide a more riveting presentation of our bargaining unit, sunshining of our other bargaining units.
Cold and quick sounds good to me.
Wow. Nice, good, yeah. Good evening, board members, superintendent, Superintendent Banda, President Hanson, the board. Last board meeting, we were here talking and sharing public comment regarding to the re-opener and successor agreements of three of our labor partners. Beginning with CSA, our Classified Supervisors Association, contract, we are now bringing it to you for action. We are looking in this contract, looking for a multi-year deal, looking for a three-year contract, and looking to explore all articles of the contract in the successor agreement to not only update and revise article language, but also to ensure that we are meeting the needs and remaining fiscally solvent. So basically, now that it has been through a public hearing, this is for your consideration in action.
Great. Do I have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much. Item 11.4.
Went at that speed just for all of you, just so you know. The next one that we will talk about...
EIU.
Yes, should be up in just a moment, is adopting the district's initial proposal for SEIU, our Service Employee International Union. Similarly, this contract is a successor contract, all articles of the contract open, in addition to a re-opener for compensation only for the 1617 school year. So similarly, we will be looking at all of the language in the contract articles to ensure that they are updated, they are in alignment with federal laws, regulations, and of course, working with the budget that we have to ensure fiscal solvency in any of our proposals for what we hope to be a three-year, a three-year term. Again, we ask for your approval.
Great. Have a motion?
So move. Aye, second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much. Item 11.5, Teamsters.
And lastly, we come before you to talk about Teamsters. Very similarly with Teamsters, this contract is a successor agreement, which means all articles are open, and in addition to compensation, the re-opener for 1617 identified up to two articles for each site to make. We will be, as with all the other contracts, looking to update language, looking to ensure that federal and state laws and regulations are aligned with what we have in our language, as well as to, of course, ensure we maintain a sustainable budget and fiscal solvency. So with this one, we ask for your approval.
Great. Have a motion?
So move.
Member second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Yes, I think we are reaching the end of our agenda, where I can, yes, we will. Future board meetings will be back here on June 28th, and then our next meeting is August 3rd. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We're adjourning to closed session.
Closed session.
Uh, yes, we are adjourning into closed session. I have a motion, second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Back to closed session. Thanks, everybody.